Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
A call to order. Tonight's meeting, Planning Board, August 28, 2025. Start by introducing the board. My name's Aaron Brown. I'm Acting Chair, as Lang Plummer's not here this evening. And now to my right is Dean Hooker. I'm an alternate member.
Marty Kennedy, also an alternate.
Gwen English, voting member.
Nancy Valangers, Select Board Representative.
Sam McLeod, alternate.
And I think, oh, we got a leadcomer. We got a straggler. Get the dark glasses. He's doing OK. John Gruner's arriving as well.
Is that good?
I think so. So can we make it so that all the alternates can vote tonight? I think so, because that puts us in a set, right?
You got it.
Yeah, so I guess I'll ask the board. Would you like to do that? I'd like to do that.
Yes.
I like everybody involved as possible, right? OK. So all the alternates will be acting members this evening. Do you want to introduce yourself, John?
John Gruner.
Aren't you like the secretary?
Clerk.
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 May I introduce myself?
And, excuse me, I'm Carol Ogilvy, interim Town Planner.
Great, thank you. And we're going to do the continuing CIP hearing right now, so I'm not sure who's up to speak on that.
Good evening, Luth Roy, Interim Town Manager. I'm just here to answer any questions if you had any questions from the night before, and if not, then you would vote to move this to final phase.
OK. Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
Now, and any comments?
Sometimes, typically in the past, we have recommended and voted, put extra emphasis on certain aspects of the CIP. I think this was a pretty slimmed-down CIP, so I don't have any particular issues with that, but...
So are you in favor?
I would say I'm in favor of moving it forward.
And endorsing?
And endorsing.
Yeah, OK. Anybody else?
That's just my opinion.
Anybody else?
I'm just, I'm going to refuse myself because of the process.
Where it goes.
Yeah.
Anything on it?
I'll just make a comment that I think there's been a tremendous amount of work done on vehicle traffic flow, but I...
This is for CIP.
Oh, OK.
It's OK.
Sorry about that.
No, it's OK.
Good?
Good.
OK. Anything on the CIP, John?
Well, I only, I only watched it from a distance, but no.
No? All right.
I'm good.
All right. So then, does anybody want to make a motion?
What's the right wording to use?
And I used the wrong term, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm going to abstain, not refuse.
Sure.
Thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion. Anybody comfortable with wording a motion?
What were your words that you used when you first introduced this again?
Let's see, so you would move to recommend the draft CIP as the formal CIP for the fiscal year 2026 through 2031, I believe it is, excuse me. And to send it to BRC and Select Board.
OK.
Put me on the fly for a motion, Gwen, I don't know.
OK. I, instead of going through it again, I'll just say, I, I...
I move, what?
You're going to second it.
Yeah, no, I move.
We can't...
We need to make the motion.
Yeah, we need to make it. Sometimes, sometimes Dave doesn't mean...
Yes.
OK. I move to recommend the CIP, recommend the draft CP, CIP as drafted in front of us without any changes, and move to advance this to the Select Board. And this is for fiscal year 2026 through 2031. And what?
And the BRC.
Oh, the Budget Review Committee.
All set?
Yeah.
Second?
That was the most bumbling, bumbling one I've ever done.
I think it's OK. So a discussion? OK, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention, the rest are in favor, so moved.
Thank you.
See you next year. It looks like we have some minutes to go over. Gwen, do you know where we stand on those? Is it just August 4th?
No. So, Mr. Chair, may I answer that question?
Yes.
Because I had to go through it.
Sure.
I get a hard copy, and I also look online. And my hard copy was only July 10th, which were already approved.
Yeah.
We have two sets of minutes that are not approved yet. June 12 and August 14. But I don't know if anyone else has been able to review August 14. I have them because they were printed out, but they were not in my packet.
Yeah.
So why don't we skip, is it July 10th?
July 10th are already approved. They were in there.
It's June 12.
June 12.
So June 12, 2025, were tabled.
We're kind of waiting for Aaron. Have you had a chance to look at these?
What was the question? I'm not the best at that.
It's, it's...
How many comments have I made on minutes in how many years have you acted? Not a lot. Usually when you ask me, "Did you mean minutes?"
So that was, that was the meeting?
So what was the question?
I actually didn't have any particular questions.
Oh, you didn't?
It was more that the, I think Lang felt it was important that...
Marty can explain.
OK.
The issue was you would put the conditions together, and nobody who would agree on them.
I think Barb got a hold of me about how to write it up for the actual plan. So I will have to say, I would have to look at that again, to be honest. So why don't we table it again?
Yeah, we just got this, right?
OK.
Well, that's June 12th we're talking about, aren't you? Or are you talking...
We're talking about June 12, and now also August 14.
Yeah, so I just, we did, I just got those as well. What you described, Nancy, is exactly what happened to me. So why don't we just table the minutes?
Do they have, do we have to vote to table individually, or can I do them all at the same time?
Don't both. Somebody has a problem with it.
I'll move it, and someone seconds, how's that? So I'm going to move to table the draft minutes from June 12, 2025, and August 14, 2025, to our next meeting, which I don't have that date.
Oh.
Hold on, sorry, bear with me. I need a calendar. Our next meeting is September 11, 2025.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Looks unanimous.
Do you have a copy of the June 12?
I do.
OK. You can have mine if you want.
So I'm going to have to tell Lang that I wasn't very effective in getting any minutes pushed through.
He's not coming back until those are done.
It'll be a while. OK.
OK.
I think our next order of business is the continued public hearing on the application of Kaylee Associates for Site Plan Review and a Shoreland Conditional Use Permit for the proposed redevelopment of the property at 97 Portsmouth Avenue. The developers proposing to demolish the existing Blue Ribbon Dry Cleaners building on the site and construct a multi-use building to include commercial space, amenities, and 14 residential units with parking and associated site improvements. The property is located in the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District and is identified as Tax Map Parcel Number 65-125, Planning Board Case Number 25-3. So we're just continuing this and basically reopening it for public comment as well as our discussion. I would prefer to start the meeting with asking if there's anybody here from the applicant side who would like to address the board at this time. Good time?
Good time. Hi, I'm Josh Lenzetta. I represent Kelly Associates. Christian Smith is on his way in. He is going to present to you, he's literally walking across the street right now, so if we could just...
Hold off for a second?
Hold off for two to three minutes. He should be up. I just texted him as you called it. We thought you'd take a little longer with the initial, initial stuff.
I'll just shift directions real quick on that, then, and just ask, is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment on this application at this time?
True. I don't know if the, Mr. Chair, you would prefer to wait until you hear from the apps at first?
No.
Thank you. So as most of you know, my name is Chris Hilson. I'm an attorney of Donahue, Tucker, and Shindelik. I represent REL Properties, the, what I call the Margaritas Plaza, as you all know. And they've asked me, I'm accompanied here by Jeff Gilbert, one of the principals of REL, who'd also like to speak. I'm going to try to confine my comments to some of the legal issues that I've, that I've seen. As a threshold matter, I'm sorry, I'm dressed the way, as some of you probably heard, I came from a youth football scrimmage where I coached the team. So you're not getting the suit and tie treatment here tonight. There's a number of different problems with this development. I guess as a threshold matter, I'll, I have no problem saying, my client doesn't necessarily object to the development of this particular lot. In fact, they welcome it, and I think you'll hear about that from, from Mr. Gilbert. The problem more broadly is the intensity of the use proposed for this very, very undersized lot, especially as it relates to neighboring lots, and how they're proposing to deal with traffic flow, pedestrian flow, and parking. As you know, this is advanced as a MUND project, and so they are receiving certain dispensations from dimensional requirements and parking requirements already. And even with those dispensations, they are, they have to move parking off-site onto the property of likely Providence Bank, who's here, and they can, they can speak for themselves, but also REL, my client's property. And the justification for doing that is that the subject property, that is that Blue Ribbon Cleaner property, benefits from an easement appertinent that would allow them to park on the property of, certainly of REL, and I think they are advancing that they can park on Providence Bank, they can speak for themselves. The reason I highlight that is I'm not convinced that the applicant's property benefits from an easement on Providence Bank, Providence Bank's property, but I have not done the title search in that. Providence Bank's lot and the, the subject lot, the dry cleaners, they're both one lot. And when their lot was created, they received easements from my client's lot, and my client's lot was also burdened with easements in favor of them. There were reciprocal parking and access easements created. The applicant's lot was then chopped up, and now you have Bank Prov's lot, and you have the subject lot. Some of you might remember, the Bank Prov lot was a Kentucky Fried Chicken a long time ago, and that was replaced at some point in time, well, at some point, I think my office did the permitting on that for the Bank Prov lot several years ago. So the issue here, and one of the main things that I want the board to understand, because I think it pertains both to the suitability of this property for zoning purposes and under site plan regulations, is the nature of the easements involved here. They are cross easements for the purposes of parking and access, and that issue here is really the, the parking. You need to understand, and I put this in my letter of, of July 9, but you need to understand the inception of these easements. These easements were created in 1964, when the subject lot was going to be a dry cleaners, and the present lot, REL's lot, was, as it is today, a strip mall. The design of these easements were for the motorized public to come in, drop off the dry cleaning, and if you want to shoot over and do whatever business you have to do over in the, over in the plaza, you can do it. They were not designed, nor have they ever been used, for permanent parking, for permanent parking for residents, really high intensity use, overnight parking. They are, people are coming and going, dropping off their dry cleaning, and, and going on their way, which is consistent, I think everybody would agree, with that entire strip, that Highway Commercial District, it's all for the motorized, for the motorized public. So why am I belaboring that? The application proposes 14 units there plus a commercial use. We all know people need to reasonably drive to and from that business. I know it's proposed as a multi-use neighborhood development, but people are going to drive to that. We all know it. We all know people aren't going to walk down Portsmouth Ave from wherever they're coming from, the gun club, or the grocery store, or whatever. We all know that they're going to drive there. I would submit to you that, and you folks are in a better position to understand this than I, when C2 was added to the MUND, you know, permissible use was, MUND was added as a permissible use to C2, I'm looking at the tax map this afternoon, and I think the focus of that zoning change was really for, between Holland Ave and what I would call the reservoir, right there. Large lots where you can actually create a walkable neighborhood that's accessible via pedestrian use, you know, and bicycle. Certainly not this sliver of a lot. I mean, we all can agree, you are not going to create a neighborhood on this lot. So getting back to the easements, I've gone afield a little bit. The problem here is that, number one, this is going to overburden the easement. The easement in question allows the users of the subject lot to park on the adjoining premises. The prior owner lopped this lot in half, and so now with respect to my client, my client is no longer the adjoining premises. They've taken an affirmative action to put a distinct lot in between my client's lot and somebody else's lot. That's the first issue. Second, and as I mentioned before, I submit to you that it overburdens the easement. This was for the transient use and the convenience of the customers. But there's another issue here that I think we need to keep in mind, and that is that my client enjoys an easement on the subject property as well. And the intensity of this use will render that easement a complete nullity. They're going to have 19, 20 parking spots there. They're going to, we all know they're going to be completely used. I mean, it's, it's a reduced parking requirement for MUND anyway. They're going to use up all that parking. It is going to render my client's easement over that property typically useless. And the reason I mention that, as part of your site plan ranks, is you need to make a determination about whether or not this parcel is suitable for the proposed development, and that includes parking in a safe and efficient manner. I submit to you that it does not. Not only is it not enough parking, not only is the traffic flow problematic, but it's really going to harm somebody else's property rights, and that certainly is a consideration that this board can take into, into, into account. So I would submit to you, and I would respectfully ask that this court, just on that, or this tribunal, just on that basis, as currently configured, deny the approvals that are, that are advanced. I will submit, one of the principals, not Mr. Gilbert, but he is very concerned and wants to draw to this board's attention, the use of cross-easement parking. When you change that cross-easement parking use from a transient use, like a shopping mall or something like that, to a residential higher-density use or higher, higher-intensity use, because what you do is you are, you're basically creating a race to this planning board, right? So in other words, if, if a bunch of different parcels share the same parking spots, and you allow one easement holder to use all of those spots in their minimum parking calculations, there's nothing left over from the other parcels that are benefit from that, from that easement. You need to keep that in mind. MUND allows you to make certain provisions for parking and maybe waive certain parking requirements, but it needs to be safe, efficient, and, and really, it needs to be efficacious, and you really need to keep that in mind. What's happening here is a small, undersized lot is grabbing a bunch of parking spots for its exclusive use, and that is not what cross-parking easements are designed to do. So with that, I'm going to conclude my, my comments. I know there's some other people here, I know Mr. Gilbert wants to talk, and folks from the bank, but I would respectfully submit that at present, as currently configured, this design is too much for this lot. It's not, it doesn't create a walkable, cycleable neighborhood, and I would respectfully submit that as currently configured, you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just before I have any questions.
We'll come back to it. Thank you. Did everybody get the letter that was sent out from Bank Prov? Because it's, it's a hard copy.
Yeah, I printed mine out when I got your email.
I have part of it.
Part of it.
Yeah, I'll keep my copy this semester.
Hard copy? I'll take a hard copy. I want you to have it there. I'm going to just say something in general, which I have said before. Never love getting these so close to a hearing. It's always great to get input, but I know for personally, you know, when you get into this stuff, and you're getting into legal lease and higher-level things that you just can't cursorly review, I personally find it challenging to really give it the time it merits when I get this less than 24 hours before a hearing. That being said, is there somebody, I'd actually like to hear from the Bank Prov representative if they feel like they want to speak. Sorry.
Perfectly fine.
We'll be back.
Ted, I'm sure, the opportunity. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. I am Todd Fahey, the author of the letter. I am with Opton and Hatfield, and I'm sorry for the, the delay in getting this to you. And I don't know if it was really delayed, because in fairness, I took time to just go through your ordinance and your own regulations. Regulations, you all know well, they're your regs, but I just wanted to talk about this project in light of your regulations. So in a nutshell, you could look at the project and say it technically qualifies, but the regulations, as the board well knows, there are other considerations that you need to bring to this, or that you should bring, well, no, I think that you do need to bring, because you have the, 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 the regulations for Site Plan Review, and they have certain requirements that, that we rely upon as a butters, and that other people, including the applicant, rely upon. I would share an Attorney Hilson's view on behalf of the bank. It's not that the bank wishes to oppose this project. We, a project on that site probably makes sense, and the bank would welcome that. It's just not the scope and the size of this one. So a few things to share. If you've had a chance to, for those of you who are at the site walk, you'll, you'll know that because of the way these lots are configured, because of the proximity of them and the intensity of the use expected, the likelihood of there not being a good deal of intrusion and cross-traffic and pedestrian safety issues and vehicular safety issues is very, very small. Restated, there will be those issues. You're trying to put too much on a very small lot. 14 units, assuming a car or two per unit, 28 cars, forgetting the commercial use. And I, this board well knows, as you're doing your job here tonight, and I too have sat on boards like you, and we've counseled many of them statewide, so I, I know these things to be true, that we just can't check our common sense about what's really going to happen. happen. As I look at the plan, and perhaps it's been amended since I've looked at it, I see places where snow can't go because it's too close to your river. So, where's the snow going to go? I'll tell you where it's going to go. They're going to park it in the spaces on the lot, and they might truck it out at some point, but it's hard to find people to do the work right now. That's a reality. It snows in New England, and for instance, if you, if there's a need for 24 spaces, those 24 could reduce to easily 20 or less in winter months. And then what? Then they park on Bank Prov, and they walk across, they walk across access and egress lanes to the bank, to the detriment of the bank and to the safety of its customers and vehicular traffic. I do join an attorney, Hilsen's views on the easements, and I, and it is something that the lawyers may well debate, and they have debated a bit, and I'm sure will continue to, and it really is the bank's hope that we can come to some resolution and find a way to have this development move forward. But in the absence of that, the bank needs to protect its interests as well. And so, we're appealing to you to look at certainly the nuts and bolts of your ordinance, and respectfully, Mr. Vice Chair, I mean, what I simply did is just called out those pieces of your regulations that, on a common sense review of this, ought to be considered. And I have a few representatives from the bank here tonight, I don't know if you'd like to hear from them or not, or if you want to wait till after when we have a site plan up. I would like to have an opportunity for them to at least explain to you the traffic flow and the parking questions and when we have a plan up to look at, if that's okay, Mr. Vice Chair.
Sure. It's fine.
All right, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I think, I know I would like to hear from the other representatives, but I think that makes sense to wait a little bit till the applicant gets back in front and then come back.
Sure, sure. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for.
No, 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 perfectly fine. My name is Jeff Gilbert. I'm one of the two owners of the shopping center that we've been alluding to as the Margarita Shopping Center, and we acquired that property, actually took management of the property in 2004, acquired it in 2005, so it's 20 years ago that we've owned the property, and many of you, I'm sure, recall the state of the property at that time. So, we have redeveloped the property both physically and repopulated the property with tenants that we believe add a lot of value to the community, and we're very proud the way in which the shopping center has evolved over the years. At no time during that time did we anticipate that these cross-easements would be utilized by a adjacent development of property that would in fact steal from us six parking spaces or seven parking spaces, let alone the issues associated with all the traffic patterns and public safety, both for our own customers who might be coming from the bank or coming from the complex of units, the 14 units. So, it's the intensity of the use and it's the utilization of our parking which we have problems with. We strongly favor the development of this property. In fact, initially, we had had many discussions with the property owner when it was the laundry facility first and when it was the KFC next to it, about acquiring that property and adding it to the development of our shopping center. Needless to say, they bore no fruit in the end, but we still strongly believe that for the best interest of the community and for the best interests of us as owners of that shopping center and our tenants in that shopping center, that a suitable use and a suitable development of that property is in everyone's best interest. The current use does not add any real value to the community and especially to the adjoining properties. But we are very concerned, and as a result, that's why we're here to oppose this, in its current configuration. We would welcome development, we'd be delighted to have conversations with the proposed developer. We've tried to initiate these to see if indeed we can find some common ground, which a suitably scaled development would work very well for the benefit of everyone in the community, and we would welcome that today. So far, the developer doesn't, hasn't seen fit to engage in any conversations about that. And just as a practical matter, if he were to scale the project back to 10 residential units instead of 14, he would then have adequate parking on his own site, not stealing parking from somebody else, whether it's Bank Prov or whether it's us. And we think that sets, if you approve that, that sets a public policy which, so far as we know, and we have done some research on this, there is no jurisdiction we've been able to find, no municipality, no community, that has adopted that approach, that has permitted the use of reciprocal easements to satisfy a fundamental need for parking on the development of a site, whether adjoining or next, or close to, and there's nothing in New Hampshire that has permitted that so far as we know. And we have several jurisdictions in which the issue's been addressed and has, in all those instances, been found to be a bad public policy. And I would submit to you, that's the same relevant issues here. It's not about developing the property, it's not about a development that would be very attractive and enhance the community. We're all for that. It's just the scale of this development. And certainly, we know from being in the shopping center business for 22 years now, that you can't always maximum develop the property, that you have to do a development that lends value to the community, that's sustainable, and that doesn't create public safety issues. You'll hear from others who are more conversant on this than perhaps I am, that the public safety issues are very real, and we trust you'll consider those. It's not about not developing the property, it's about right sizing the development. And we hope that you'll consider that and encourage the applicant to come back with a plan that has the parking that he needs by your regulations on his own site, not on an adjacent property. And with that, of course, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions at this time?
I have none at this time.
Thank you.
Be happy to speak any other time.
Thanks.
If you have any information you'd like.
Thank you. So, I want to bring it back to the board just for a minute, and just get everybody's feeling on that reciprocal easement issue regarding the parking and the potential conversion of that easement to a quasi-permanent spot, because if it is a requirement of our regulations to have those spots, even if they don't get used, it's still a requirement. So, I would, I personally would agree that it is utilizing that as if it were owned versus an easement. But I am not an attorney, so we have heard from a couple who are opposing, but I want to get your all sense from that as well, if you're willing to share. I think it's helpful. Anybody?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like that's what's happening, right? And 10 would work, 10 units instead, and I, what I've heard about, you know, there's going to be two cars per property, and then there's going to be visitors and stuff like that, so it seems like a problem.
It does.
It does seem like a problem.
Any sense of that, Marty, at all?
Two things. One is, we're talking about an easement, is there anything written down? Is there a document that we can see at some point? Is somebody going to present to us a document on how that cross-easement works?
I think, well, my understanding on this property, but we do have a couple attorneys here, I'm not sure if you have someone who can speak on that. Would you like to speak on that?
I'd love to hear the poll.
Oh, here us first, all right.
Okay, okay. Well, okay, I guess beyond that, I mean, my sense is, in my opinion, clearly the demand for parking of this use is going to be greater than what they're providing. So, the question is, is there parking somewhere else? I look at the entire plaza, and my sense is probably, but shouldn't somebody make it, demonstrate that to us? I mean, it would seem to me the applicant could go out and do some type of a monitoring of the existing conditions out there and say, you know, we need X amount of parking spaces, there are X plus or spaces out there, the highest demand is whatever, and so I don't, I don't know. I mean, it seems to me the applicant needs to be able to make in that argument, that there's plenty of spaces elsewhere, they ought to provide some evidence of that.
So, I agree with that, but I would also comment that in our downtown district, we're kind of in like a zero parking requirement. So, that's when this issue always comes up with parking, right? With any kind of development, especially multifamily or mixed use, we always see, we always get into the parking issue, which is not unusual. So, in the downtown, really all they generally demonstrate is, oh yeah, there's a town lot here, there's a town lot there, you know, we can work, you know, the residential people be using it overnight, not during the day, blah, blah, blah. But in this case, there's actually a parking requirement, which is onsite requirement. So, without being able to satisfy that onsite requirement, they're utilizing an easement which is not on property they own. They don't have, I don't, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not completely exact on the reciprocal easement of parking, but I can tell you it's not fee simple ownership, which is what parking, in my opinion, should be. You own it. And we've heard objection to that being utilized by the person who would lose in that case, right? I also would say, as a community member, I think there is ample parking, just my common sense does tell me that, that at night, I've never gone there and seen it, oh my goodness, I wish I could park there. That's not the case. But private property owner certainly has the right to dictate what his property is utilized for. So, my concern is that if you're overstretching your permitted use to meet our regulations, I think that kicks you into needing a variance from the parking requirement. That's my own opinion. And I'm expressing that out of line a little bit, but I'm just letting, I try to be pretty transparent.
So, I'll just add to it, because you brought up what I was going to bring up, and that is, we have, there have been waived parking downtown, but because of municipal parking lots, that parking lot's not municipal.
Right.
So, it is now on the town to provide parking, overnight parking for the previous waived ones, right? But we can't do that on private law.
Right.
I, I just think this is a bit too big for this lot, this project, at this point.
I would also add that although it seems like there's a lot of parking available at some point, maximum usage, which I believe as a resident of town, is Friday and Saturday night when Margaritas is full, there are not a lot of extra spaces.
That's right.
And you do get into winter conditions, and the other thing that I look at is, should the encumbered property that Mr. Gilbert's associated with, should they decide to redevelop? And these parking spaces are essentially lost, that could inhibit them from what they can then further do with their property. It might require them to really utilize all the parking that they have. So, that's what would concern me as well, is the property right, they're kind of losing some of that bundle of sticks, so. I just wanted to get that out there, because I think that it's probably going to be a continued discussion in this hearing about that part of our requirement.
Could I just ask a question to clarify my mind? So, hypothetically, could the, could the bank put signs in that parking lot in front of the bank saying parking only? Are they not allowed to do that?
Well, I can.
Bank parking.
It's monitoring it, I think that is their concern. They're going to have to run out every, however often.
You're saying, because they prohibit other people from parking, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. Are they allowed to do that? Or is the easement saying, no, they need to make those available to anybody?
Marty, even if they could, it would be complied with 90% of the time.
Yeah, that's a secondary issue, but I'm just asking, could they, are they allowed to put a sign?
If the easement is in question, we don't really know.
I think I, I'm going to have to ask one of the attorneys to address the easement specifically, and I, I'm going to push that onto the applicant, and then if the butters' counsel wants to object, we can hear that too, but I guess I'll ask the applicant to come forward on that. If you could just address what we're talking about right now for a minute, that would help further that part of our discussion, please.
My name's Josh Lanzetta, I'm the attorney, attorney at Tom and Buridi. I appreciate all the feedback on the easements. I'm not going to get into addressing the comments from the butters at this point until we present, but I'm happy to talk about the easements briefly.
Thank you.
We have submitted a packet, we've done a full title search, we did submit all of the plans and all of the easement language related to four properties in that row, starting at the manor and going over to Margaritas Plaza, so you've seen that already, I hope. I'm hearing a lot of innuendo and what I think is kind of utter nonsense, to be totally honest with you. Just as you would alienate rights in theory, if you were to follow the theory that redevelopment of Margaritas or Bank Prov or the subject parcel alienates the rights of that owner by, because other people might park there, in this case, if Margaritas redevelops, the subject parcel is now alienated, because the reciprocal easement is such that anyone from Margaritas can park on any of the other two lots and vice versa. If Mr. Gilbert purchased in 2004 even, which I believe he did, if you'll notice, a number of things have happened on these properties. They started as one, they were parceled out via subdivision, and a very broad easement was created for access and parking. That was very intentional. I can tell you that even the attorneys in the 60s, if they wanted to condition the easement in some way, they would have argued about it, drafted it, and recorded it. This easement is intentionally broad, and it's very arguable that it's actually intended for these smaller lots to benefit from, because they were small, and in order to develop the parcels to get the maximum use at that time, they said, okay, there's not enough parking, there's this other enormous lot that's going to stay the size, it's easier to park there. Margaritas redevelops, the subject parcel loses parking on the Margaritas lot. It works the same way. Here, the easement is a property right, might not be a fee interest, you're correct about that, Mr. Chair, but it is actually an pertinent property right that runs with the land, transfers through successors as they purchase. And there have been plenty of moments, it seems, if properties have been subdivided and bought since the original divestment, for the parties to remove these easements. And if you look in that chain of title they provided, you'll even see that, I believe there was a lease, they even go so far as to reestablish and reassert the broad parking and access easement that is still in play today. So, it, at one point, seemed to be removed in the chain of title, and then it was actually put back very intentionally. So, the concept with, when this entire, in the aggregate, piece of land in excess was developed, was that parking would cross between these three lots. And there are a number of conditions, even on the Bank Prov lot, that alienate parking. There's an enormous, completely unnecessary mulch bed with curbing in the back of that lot that probably takes up six to eight spaces. So, it's hard for me with a straight face to say, oh yeah, they're losing parking here, when they're not even utilizing the actual parking that they could be using on their lot. You know, in talking to both of the parties, we have one party attempting to leverage, hey, you know, we'll support your development if you extinguish all access and parking to our lot. And then we have another party essentially doing the same, saying, hey, we don't even use the back of our lot, we've directed our employees not to park anywhere on the back of our lot. So, I think that this is somewhat of a farce, that we're saying, oh, parking is going to be alienated, we're going to lose rights, we're going to lose parking. It just, it's just not the case, and overwhelmingly, the easement, the parties would need to agree to how this should be done. There should have been a maintenance, an access and maintenance agreement done when this was done in the 60s, when it was further subdivided, when it was further purchased. It hasn't been done, and the only reason that it hasn't been done is because it's intentional. The properties are able to park across this particular development, all of the residences which are small, and they're small on purpose, because that's what the community needs right now, all of the residences have spots on the lot. We're talking about the transient parking for the commercial space that's in, proposed in the building as well, which, by the way, I think is in the same exact footprint as the dry cleaning building is now. So, there's not a lot changing on this site, other than the building is going up. But in all regards, the easements that we've shown you, they are intentionally, the easement is intentionally broad, it has been restated. is intentionally broad, it has been restated in the chain of title, and none of the parties have done anything to remove that easement, ever, that I know of. So, and maybe Mr. Gilbert could talk more about that, but, you know, maybe there is a situation where they tried to remove it, but it, it's still on the books, and it should be able to be used in this way. It is a property right that the subject property holds and transfers with that property. So, removing their ability to utilize it alienates their property right, just as much as it would alienate the Margaritas Plaza or Bank Prob. I could go through the chain of title and put it up on the screen. To be honest with you, though, I thought I was going to sit in the back and hope to say nothing tonight, so. We could do that at another hearing, but I don't think that's necessary. It's, if you looked at the first map of the property and then read the easement, it's incredibly broad, and I have to assert respectfully that that is very intentional. You have an enormous property with a ton of parking that is almost never fully utilized. We all know that. Everyone drives past this property probably once a day in town, right? And the use that's being proposed is complementary, as far as, if Margaritas focuses on lunch and dinner, you have a proposed coffee shop or coffee bar, that would be a morning crowd anyways. There's plenty of unused parking in the back of Bank Prob, there's plenty of unused parking at Margaritas. And I don't understand how the intensity argument is going to squash any parking right in court in New Hampshire. You know, and I've heard reference to a lot of things, but I haven't heard a case referenced yet, and I haven't seen a case referenced in any filing, so I, I'm slightly confused about where the intensity argument's coming from. But, it's our position that the easement allows parking for all of these properties. Bank Prob customers can park on the dry cleaning property. Margaritas, you know, people that are going to eat at Margaritas can park on the Bank Prob property. It is reciprocal. They might not want to, but they can.
So, by your intent, your definition, if the subject property had five parking spots, but had this easement in place that it has, it could do a project that would require 50 parking spots and that would be okay, under the current easement?
I believe that you are, that this property can send people to park on any of the properties that are subject to this easement.
So-
There is nothing in the easement that says that it can't.
So, if you had five parking spots onsite and did a project in front of us that required 50 parking spots-
It's possibly yes.
-you believe you satisfy that requirement because you benefit from the easement?
That is what the easement's intent is to take-
Can you say yes or no?
I, I did say yes already.
That's all I need, that's all I need.
But, but I think that it's important to qualify it, though, because-
Okay.
-you have a larger lot, the intent in the design of this is to provide parking on that larger lot for the two smaller lots. That's how they were able to be developed in the way that they are.
I understand what you're saying. I hear his argument. I think we all hear it. I still, I still personally have the question as to how much oomph does the easement provide? That's just me personally. But, we can get back to that. I appreciate your argument, appreciate your position, and I definitely hear it. Does anybody have a question on that specifically?
I do have a question. You said you provided a document with all the easement, the parking easement documents, and you hoped we reviewed it. I have not seen that.
No, I-
It was submitted, I didn't personally submit it, Jeff, when did you?
Yeah, I sent it in.
When?
And how long?
June, after the TRC here.
Okay, so we'll-
It's been in, it's been here for quite some time.
I don't remember seeing it, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it was, it was a title research package, Nancy, that was probably an inch thick in paper.
So, one thing we can do is, we can all review that. We can also reconvene with code enforcement, because they didn't kick the applicant to ZBA to get a variance for parking. So, that's, there is a little bit of, we usually come, you usually come here, applicants usually come here loaded up with all their variances that they needed by the time we see them. Not always though, because we do have people come here, do an application, and then change the things again, as we all well know, when they leave here. So, people do kick back and forth a little bit. So, we can follow up with our town planning's opinion on that issue and potentially town legal counsel.
You weren't in front of the ZBA?
We were in front of the ZBA.
Because they talked about this.
Oh, that's right.
And we, basically, they're, they allowed this property to be developed with the building in the exact footprint of the dry cleaner, which is what we've done. The reason for that is there were slight encroachments into the five-foot building setback on both sides. So, that, that variance was granted, and then Jeff moved kind of in a different direction after that, that particular filing, when we got through with reviews with the planner and the code enforcement officer. A couple of points that I would like to make, just to expound-
Can we just stop? I just want, because I did watch the meeting-
You're going to present it.
You are?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are just, if I could just follow up. I believe at the ZBA, they were concerned about this, and they had said they had hoped to see the documentation.
Yes, and it was provided.
I just wanted that to be-
Yep, it's been in town hall since June, where it is.
Okay.
I can't tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and just a couple other points, just to expound a little bit on what Josh had, had mentioned, specific to the use of the coffee shop. You know, again, that, that's typically going to be a more morning-intensive use, which logically, one would think that the residents would be off working at that point, so more of the on lot, spaces are going to be open. Again, I just want to hammer home the fact that the residential required parking in the MUND, and I have to believe that they did not put one space per unit in there by accident. That, that is what the code is. But you would assume those people would be gone, and for the, for the lion's share of the time that the cafe is potentially going to be busy. And I, I just don't see this as a, a parking stall steal. I can't fathom any of the residents are going to park in the REL parking lot overnight and walk back to their apartment. That, that just doesn't make any sense. And the only other point I would like to make is that I heard someone say, might have been Mr. Gilbert, that the proposal doesn't provide any benefit to the municipality or the community, and this, this type of housing-
I think you meant the existing.
Yeah, you didn't mean what's being proposed.
He's shaking his head, yes. I think you misheard, Christian.
Yeah.
I don't think you're swaying in your pride.
No, he was talking about-
Well, I suppose if you've got dirty laundry, that might be a different answer. All right, thank you.
We all have dirty laundry, Christian.
Ain't that the truth?
I'm sorry, could I ask one more question?
Of course.
Something was said at the sidewalk.
John has one, too.
Okay, sorry.
You're up.
You keep talking about the coffee bar, but at the sidewalk, during the sidewalk, a few times, it was brought up that that might be an office.
It might be retail, it's unknown. What we did is we looked at this-
I just want clarification.
-as if it was the most intense use for parking that we could-
Okay.
-pull out of your parking right now.
But the, the coffee bar, they're going to come and go in the morning when the residents are gone, but if it's an office that has people coming in-
It likely won't be an office. I think if it, it's going to be something else, commercial like retail.
Okay.
As opposed to office space, I just, yeah.
It's still more coming, okay. Anyway, thank you for that.
Sure.
Can I, can I give, anyone who can answer that knows the answer? How did we get here with this piece of property? Was it all one owner at one point? He wanted to sell off?
Yes. That's my understanding of it.
That's it?
Title history, is it was all a single owner from the manor all the way through REL, and over time, there were subdivisions that took place. Which, which is why those easements were put into place.
Right. And those two properties were sold how many years ago? I know, I know the dry cleaner's been there forever.
A long time.
I think he told us.
Yeah.
It's been decades. I could get that answer for you, I just don't remember off the top of my head.
And, so was that the only way, was that all one piece of property and those were subdivided off? Is that what you said?
That's my understanding, yes.
So, that's probably the only way they could convince someone to buy those lots, then?
Probably.
That there'd be enough parking, you could be able to, we give an easement on some of ours.
Right.
Well, when you create a large, you know, the parking plaza is a large lot, and so whoever kept that and sold off the others, there's a kind of a triple benefit, right? So, you sell two lots and then you get to keep the land, you know, most of the land mass of that larger lot. That's why the easements were put in place. It makes selling the smaller lots more marketable, right?
All right, and then, he has two more businesses that draw people to his shopping center.
Right. And I think that's also, just to note this, the applicant, after we went for that variance, which was granted, and we did provide all of the easement detail for those proceedings, but we worked with the planning department to utilize the MUND specifically. And I believe that the idea here, on this particular stretch of highway, is to try to, you know, C2 was specifically added, that was amended recently, to add and edit into the MUND, or the MUND was added to, however you want to think of it. And the intent there, I believe, the town is trying to make that more walkable. The hospital is not that far from this property. It, it could be, what, two blocks? Three blocks tops? There are a lot of people there that are waiting for surgery, going to visit someone, picking up a coffee, bringing some flowers, a lot of staff there. I think the intent right now, from, as I understand it, and the planning department can correct me, but it's to try to make that strip, which isn't super walkable or pedestrian-friendly right now, into something that is more suited to that use. And that's why this application is designed to the way that it is. And, you know, when you amend your ordinance to add in the particular district that we're in, we are tailoring this property and this development to the intent of that amendment. So, and we worked with the planning department to do that, and that's why we're proposing it the way that it is.
So, when the new owner bought the property, you had, you had all that information, right? Not like this is a surprise?
You need to go to a mic.
Yeah.
Let me clarify one element that I think is very important for you to focus on.
Mr. Gilbert, please identify yourself, because you make minutes after.
Yes, I'm, again, Jeff Gilbert, one of the two owners of the shopping center, REL Commons. These were occasional uses. This was never designed to be and never used for permanent parking overnight. It was never used for that, and it was never intended to. When we bought the property 22 years, 20 years ago, the, the uses that were there were functioning on their own property. There was no common use between the lots, and there never has been, only for the developer here before you proposing such a use. It's never been that way. Never utilized for, there's been never cars coming from KFC parking on our, our property.
It was never utilized, but could it have been utilized?
No, because we thought-
The language allow it?
The language of that easement, and, you know, lawyers can opine on this, and by the way, I happen to be a lawyer, but I haven't practiced law in a long time. No, the intention of these easements was occasional use, not permanently taking these five or six spaces and making those spaces the property of the developer. And that's what's happening here. This is not occasional use. Let's also be realistic, with 14 residential units, don't you think most of those people will have two cars? And I think that's one of the serious questions here. If they're parking on our lot, if you look at the safety issues, which you will, they have to cross drive lanes, not our driveline alone, but the drivelines of ourselves, the drivelines of the bank. And it was never intended. We've owned the property and developed the property in a manner we think is beneficial to all, and there was never an intention for us to use their parking or for them to use our parking on a permanent basis. And if you were to allow them to do this, you are taking parking from our parking lot. And this is not a municipal lot. This is not something that, that the town has designated as a parking space available for adjoining properties in the community.
In addition to that being the intent, is that written on the easement?
The easement language was created in the 60s. We didn't participate in the easement language. It was not-
The easement language doesn't say occasional?
No, but-
It does not.
May I be heard on this?
Yes, yeah.
I don't want to-
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Although I have a question for Mr. Gilbert when you're done.
I'm not done.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
So, I, I want to, I want to make sure that we keep the context of these easements in mind, because it's, it's critical, okay? So, first, let's talk about what it says, getting to your question, Mr. Kennedy, okay? So, the easement in favor of the subject property says, "The right to park vehicles in the parking area provided in the adjoining premises of the grantor." Okay, that's what it says. That's, that's the whole thing. That, that's, that's the long and the short of it. There's a reciprocal easement, which is slightly different, slightly broader, okay? The easement in favor of my client's property says, "The right to park vehicles in any parking area in existence to be developed on the granted premises." That is the, the REL lot. So, my client has a right to send his licensees, his people, anywhere on that lot that is currently paid, the current parking spots. That's what I, that's what I'm getting to. But getting to your point, and certain, Mr. Gruber, to your point, that's what the easement said in 1964. The reason that is important, the date, is because that dry cleaner was created in 1965. That's when this dry cleaner was created, and it's the intention of the grantor, when you're talking about easements, that informs the scope of the easement. That's why I'm belaboring when it was created and for what purpose. And let's not lose sight of this. I think a lot of you recognize, probably know it better than I do. A lot of these easements, these cross access and, and parking easements are created because DOT doesn't want multiple entrances from each lot. They want shared entrances, and that's what happened here. That's why this, this easement came into place in the 60s. It was taken away at one point in time, in 1971, the parking easement in favor of my client was taken away by the parties in interest, and my client's easement was reintroduced and went back on record in 1993. Okay, so it, that doesn't really have anything to do with the easement in favor of the subject property. What we're talking about is the easement in favor of my client's property. So, I don't know if that, that clarifies the easement issue at all, but I want to be very clear about that. I, I look at this and I say, we, there's a reason we have subdivi, you folks do subdivisions now, because what happened here is property was subdivided off, and now you have an undersized lot, right? And all transmissible value from these, this larger lot has been conveyed pursuant to many different transactions, and now you're left with what's left, and you can't buy the bootstraps of somebody else, you know, create that lot into something that's not. So, I'll be quiet. I have other things that I'd love to be, you'd love to talk to you about.
I have a question for you, actually.
Please, please.
In your opinion, could your client deny the applicant, you know, from utilizing the parking?
The, my client is subject to a private easement appurtenment for the temporary parking of the custom here, okay? So, if someone goes over there, I mean, let's, I'll come back to this, but they, they're subject to this easement. The easement is of record, as Mr. Gruder mentioned, but it's the scope of that easement that I have problems with with the applicant.
So, they couldn't deny the parking?
They couldn't deny the parking, as long as it's for the motorized patrons, yes.
But they could deny, in your opinion, overnight parking?
Yes, they, that is over-
Permanent parking?
That is overburdening this easement.
That's right.
And I would submit to you that it also doesn't make a ton of sense. The owner of the Bank Prob and the subject lot subdivided the bank lot off, so now, are you going to have parking, parking in the REL lot crossing across Bank Prob on foot or by car to access this subject property? That's not, that's not good planning. I mean, that-
It isn't, but at the same time, I used to live in downtown Portsmouth, and I walked further than that to park, so it's not that unusual.
That's not, that's a lot of, in fairness, Mr. Vice Chair, that's not exactly what I'm saying. I'm not saying the distance is prohibitive. What I'm talking about is the development in the intervening years since 1964. There's no crosswalks on that main entrance into the Margarita parking lot, or at least there's not anywhere you come across into Bank Prob and then cross Bank Prob's parking lot.
It's not ideal.
Correct, correct. So-
Unfortunately, we deal with that a lot in our area, that things aren't like, we don't have a lot of planned communities.
In fairness, I'm not in front of this board very often, so I don't know. Sorry.
I will say that the MUND specifically said that this must facilitate comfortable pedestrian, pedestrian travel, and I think that this does not accommodate safety, and for pedestrians or bicycles, and bicycles are also to be considered in the MUND. bicycles are also to be considered in the MUND.
Yeah, it's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of vehicular stuff going on.
There sure is.
Can I out us?
It's one of the more challenging, I use, where Mr. Gilbert is, but, you know, I, I would have to give you credit for your tenants over there because I patronize many of them.
We're glad to hear that.
Yeah, no, and they, they are a great part of the community, actually. But I will say, one of the challenges is traversing the parking lot.
Yeah.
And I might use multiple people there for different services, and even just going back and forth, I've got my head on a swivel because I feel like I'm playing hockey, like I'm gonna get hit any minute.
From the sidewalk, Gwen and I walked from the sidewalk over. And we did get in the way of a vehicle, not intentionally.
Sure.
I just outed us, but, we did, and we both looked at each other and said, that's what someone.
Those kind of parks, well, that's why we changed the way we do parking lots.
No line of sight.
As, as well. I think it's improving versus the way that one's laid out. And it's just, it's just a lot going on. That's just, we can talk about how, you know.
Look, anything can be improved on, but it is a reality that we found out the hard way.
So I don't know how the board is feeling, but I'm not certain that I'm gonna get, I'm just letting you know where I'm at. I'm not sure that I'm gonna get to a conclusion on this, this specific question, which is an important one.
Not tonight.
In regards to this application.
I have one more question I'd like to ask.
On this?
If I could.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm sitting in front of some very talented lawyers, and I'm very much a layman. So this may be a very naive question. But I frequent blue ribbon cleaners a lot more than I'd like to.
He's got a lot of dirty lawn.
Gardeners get dirty. And there's a lot of parking in front of that building now. And in the proposal, there's less parking in front of that building. So if you all have cross easements, doesn't your proposal deprive your two abutters, your, the other two people, of parking spots that they have easement rights to? And how do we justify that? And how do you, how do we? Help me here. I told you, I'm the novice.
Well, Mr. McLeod, the, the rear of the proposed building has all of the parking that is out in front of the laundry mat at this time, and then some, as well as the seven perpendicular stalls that, that are proposed up in the front. So we end up at a net gain of parking. I think what, what the abutters are taking issue to is the fact that fourteen of those are gonna be designated to the residents. You know, there are still six additional spaces that one would anticipate should be open overnight. But again, that's, that's when I, I would foresee them being open. And when I would foresee the max parking in the property, the locus property, would be in the evening when those vehicles are there for the night. You know?
If I may, Mr. Chair, since we're kind of slightly out of order with us presenting after a butter commentary, usually I'd ask to rebut and have the last word at the end. And I would try to take all the questions and comments and meld them into succinct answers, but we're going rapid fire. I just wanted to speak to two points, I heard, if that's okay. Occasional use isn't in the easement language. Temporary use isn't in the easement language. That's what I guess I would call fiction and what maybe the modern tabloids might call fake news. It's just not there. So that, that's a, that's a desire or a wish, but it's not reality. Safety is a word that gets batted around a lot in order to stop action, in my experience. There is a way to stripe and sign the three lots to create pedestrian ingress and egress in a safe manner. And that's sometimes the best that you can do. And this is a neighborhood that hopefully does develop more pedestrian access, but we're not, but we're blending parking and safety, and I don't think that they go together. Parking is parking, where are the cars? That's what the ordinance is asking for, where are the cars? Safety can blend a number of things. Hey, there's someone walking out of their car and walking to some location, but they're, they're separate issues here. And we are talking about having residences with an assigned parking area, and all of that parking is on the property. So we are only talking about possible temporary parking as required by the ordinance, and that's what we're using the reciprocal easement for. That being said, unless each property has a security guard that they're 24/7, nothing right now is stopping a patron from margaritas from parking at the blue ribbon dry cleaner overnight, probably, unless someone catches the car and says, hey, there's no overnight parking as a policy. But this idea of temporary or occasional does not exist. And if the owners of these properties wanted that to exist, they should have taken the opportunity to talk to each other, negotiate it, and write a new easement, or an access and maintenance agreement, or any number of different instruments that would have affected that. And they have chosen not to do that, and that's why we have a broad easement. Yes, it was established a long time ago, but I know some lawyer, I practiced with a lawyer that was practicing in the sixties, he's a pretty sharp dude, they would have handled it. I agree with Attorney Hilsen about the language, he's not misstating it. I believe I sent Chris the, the whole title package, we have nothing to hide here. When Mr. Gilbert bought the property, whether or not he took the time to read the documents in, that were produced during his title search, he can tell you about that. But those documents are recorded at the Registry of Deeds. That is actual notice, it's not constructive, it's not implied, that is actual notice. You're buying a property encumbered with X, Y, and Z, it's in writing and it's recorded. That's how the law works in New Hampshire and in virtually every state that I practice in. So the parties that own these properties know about this, and they have been dealing with it for decades, sixty decades, you know, six decades. But I agree with Chris, you know, maybe they were for DOT access, you know, who knows? But it's hard to speculate what they were talking about when they negotiated subdividing and purchasing and selling these properties. But this thing is intentionally broad. And I, I just respectfully don't think that a court in New Hampshire is gonna say that this intensity, which is, this is a positive change for Exeter and this property. You're getting smaller residences, which New Hampshire and Exeter in particular is trying to develop in the city. One car is the standard for these particular apartments. So talking about some other standard is also fiction, as I would call it, or fake news. But there is nothing that talks about temporary or permanent parking in that easement. And that's what it is. So it, it's a tough issue for this board, and I acknowledge that. I think it's a tough, tough issue for the abutters. And I have to say, all the, as far as the attorney sitting in the room, everyone's been really friendly and somewhat trying to work this out. But the problem is that, just as they're saying there's a property right, we are asserting that we have a property right and that we are able to use this easement as it has been established. Just because it wasn't utilized in this way over time, that actually means nothing. That is a big zero in this entire thing. So things do change, and the law would allow this to happen, I believe. So that's my rebuttal to that. I'll try to keep brief the next time. We can index all of it at some point.
Question about the plan. I first, I've driven by the building, I don't know, five thousand, ten thousand times, I've never even noticed it.
I was the same, I had no idea where it was.
Yeah, and then as part of the demolition subcommittee of the Heritage Commission in town, we go to look at buildings when someone wants to tear them down, try to talk them out of it if it's, we think it's worth saving. And that one, we agreed that, you know, probably this building has seen better days, and apparently the owner wants out of the business. And I did learn also, it was the oldest dry cleaner in the state, not enough for a historic thing, though. But, I mean, they talked about maybe building apartment building. And, you know, wondered about the parking, but then I saw, you know, in front of the building, there's a lot of parking. And I didn't, you know, no, nothing was ever said until I opened the envelope here a couple of weeks ago and found that, oh, we're gonna put that in there, that's gonna eat up a dozen parking spots. There's coffee shops all around town, there's plenty of places to get to coffee. Is that really something that's necessary, or could you help your cause along by just creating more parking?
You mean the espresso kiosk?
Yeah.
That's.
It's a relevant point.
Yeah, it is, and that, you know, would be obviously up to the developer.
Well, yeah.
I don't, I don't make the decisions on what they want there.
No, you don't, but you could, you could talk to a lawyer, that, yeah.
Yeah.
If that's a solution.
You've met your MUND requirement by having commercial space underneath the apartments.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which is another, I guess that's another parking question, because I, I'm, I'm looking at, and I, I, I'll let you finish, I should.
Well, no, I did, I kind of forgot about that because they, we talked about that at that early meeting and doing something, and I thought that had been eliminated. But even if, even if there was a small coffee shop there, you wouldn't, you wouldn't eat up all that space in front of the building.
Right, no question.
Could you just, you know, and how many, yeah, it's not gonna be a drive-up kind of situation, I'm assuming.
No, no, not at all, and actually.
You couldn't do that.
Yeah.
But you could have a, have four parking spaces for that or something, I don't know.
Yeah, and I mean, you know.
You could take two spots and call it a food truck.
The, the idea with, with the way the front is set up, Mr. Gruder, is largely that that was intended to be an amenity area for the residents. You know, and I presume that's, that's gonna be primarily who utilizes.
You can only sell or rent to people who drink coffee?
I don't really know anybody that doesn't. So.
Apparently John does.
So it's fairly limited.
He's a little down on that.
I do, I do, I do. But I'm just saying, it's just eating up pretty valuable space for parking.
Oh, I absolutely understand.
And that may be a way to solve the issue.
You know, I, I absolutely agree with you, you know, and, but we also have to look at the front of that as perhaps an improved aesthetic.
Yeah, well, I didn't say, I didn't say you couldn't do a little landscape.
You know.
That would look nice.
Well, yeah, we have a fairly elaborate landscape.
It would appeal to certain members of this board, too.
Yes, yeah. But I mean.
Three or two wouldn't hurt.
Without, without a building that big, you have a little bit of, you know, some.
There would be, there would be more space, without question.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're gonna get a dozen more spaces in there, but there would, there would be more.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, right, right now, that, that front is essentially a vast area of parking.
Yeah, yeah.
It is all paved.
Yeah, it's like a building should have been twenty feet closer to the road.
And, exactly. So my, my client was looking to try and improve that, and certainly understanding that this board, certain members of this board in particular like that aesthetic of, let's put a little, let's have some grass, let's have some plantings, et cetera, et cetera.
Have some grass, just have some more parking spaces, too. That's it.
Mr. Gilbert's wife is sitting in the car, and she had a procedure involved, listen, I didn't know that, so, he's like, I have to go.
Yeah, I hope she.
I hope you don't take that for granted.
Oh, no.
So, in the interest of getting back online, on track, let's give Mr. Smith the opportunity to present as he might have if he had been on time for a meeting.
I thought you guys had scheduled the CIP for a half an hour.
We got through that pretty quick.
I was, however, just sitting outside.
You know, Christian, when the meeting starts, you gotta be ready. You know how that goes.
Absolutely. Hey, I was up here in thirty seconds.
You were. Just enough to get Hilsen going.
Don't think much.
I think I got here at 6:29, just for the record.
Well, you're a good man.
You beat me by two minutes.
Yeah, I'm not usually the first guy in the room.
Right to me.
All right, how's that? So I thought I'd start, Mr. Vice Chair, by simply going through the, the plan revisions. I will let you know that we received a, a review memo from Underwood Town's reviewing consultants two days ago, which we were able to work through the final pieces of, of that. We did submit that end of day today. But in, am I getting a? Oh, there we go. There we have it. So from, from the prior iteration, what we have done is added an additional stall in the front, which took a bit of a bite out of that initial, or not initial, the abutting patio to the residential building. We have eliminated the sidewalk along the north side of the building and property in favor of, and this was, I can't take responsibility for this, this was the architect's idea, but there is now a, the retaining wall that was here is now extended around, so this will be kind of a multi-level in the front. Retaining wall has at a maximum about a three-foot reveal, and that is intended to simply be a stone and mortar decorative retaining wall. But it does allow this to be a much more level area, including both the grassed area in this location, as well as the grassed area towards the street in front of the patio behind the kiosk. We have revised the sidewalk from basically directly into the kiosk, up here along the parking and down along the proposed access exit. And obviously, we would be tying into Portsmouth Avenue with a handicap accessible and the, the bubble notice for, for folks that are utilizing that. And I guess that, that's another point I could make, is that pedestrian traffic, there's a sidewalk all along Portsmouth Avenue through there. We're providing a connection to it. We have the parking in the rear. We also have, you know, the sidewalk that would get them into the back of the building, a sidewalk that connects down to this patio. And then folks could get from their car to the other lots and the other parcels associated with the easement, right along Portsmouth Avenue on an existing sidewalk. And just a little plug, that sidewalk on Portsmouth Avenue is five feet, that's what we're proposing for our waiver, for the on-lot sidewalk as well. It just seems a little clunky to have an eight-foot sidewalk terminating into a five-foot sidewalk. But that's neither here nor there. We, we did go through, one of the comments that Underwood made was that the, the two basins out here, the two catch basins out here in Portsmouth Avenue may need to be vacuumed out at the end of the project. In the event that that is the case, we added a note to the erosion control construction sequence, putting the contractor on notice that that may need to be done after evaluation by DPW. Another, another feature that we had ironed out, we, our surveyors were having issues getting into the sewer manholes out there. They were able to finally unearth the sewer manhole in the drive aisle here, as well as a sewer manhole in the street. So we now know the pipe size, the pipe materials, and what we have done based on Underwood's input is there is a six-inch line coming from this building to tie into that sewer manhole. There was a, a rather odd angle coming in here from the, the kiosk. Now bear in mind, that's, that's very likely not gonna be functional in the winter. When you see the, the architect's plans, you'll understand why. But there is a way for, and it's, there, there are no bathroom facilities out there either, that would be in the, in the lobby or in the coffee shop. But, so it would literally be just for drainage of coffee, water, that, tea, whatever they serve there. So that four-inch line is now proposed to tee into the six-inch, and a single line now goes into the existing catch bay, or is proposed to go into the existing catch basin. And finally, on that point, we have confirmed with the sewer and water superintendent that there is absolutely no capacity issue with that sewer. That was another question that Underwood had brought up in that area. Those are by and large the, the major changes. There was one comment that Carol had posed specific to the lighting plan, and can tell you, you're not gonna see it very well up on the projector, but if I go to the lighting plan, you can see that there are some very small percentages of foot candle lumens that spill over the properties, but they're absolutely gonna be in a wash. over the properties, but they are absolutely going to be in a wash because we have a light there, two lights in this landscape area. I believe there is a building-mounted light on the side of the bank, and there are three lights, and these are tall, these are probably 20, 22-foot poles, and they are old-fashioned luminaires. They're without question not dark, star compliant, but they exist at this location. There's another one here, and then another one down at the end of that parking lot. So my contention on that is any overspillage shown from our lighting engineer is going to be a complete wash in the abutting lights that, that illuminate the aisles and the parking areas for safety. And I think that about sums up the majority of the changes. And obviously, we, we will remind you, there is a conditional use permit outlining the disturbance within the shoreline protection zone, and, and to that end, Mr. Gruder, we have a pretty significant reduction in impervious within that 300-foot shoreline protection zone. That was another reason, you know, for, for the lack of pavement out front. Yep.
Okay.
So, I don't want me to butt in, but I just spoke with Mr. Callie, and to your point, and after some of the feedbacks, and I'm hoping this might press the easy button for both the butters and the board. So, the parking, and Christian can correct me if I'm misstating the parking requirements, but as I've said, we have 14 residential units, all with a designated parking spot on the rear of the property. We were talking about four temporary spots for the necessity for four more temp spots essentially for the business, and we have been asserting that we can, and I still am asserting that we can use the easement area broadly for that. However, the commercial space is proposed as a restaurant, right? We're serving largely beverages and coffee. That increased the parking count because it keys off of seat count for the restaurant, right? So, the application came in proposing 30 seats. If we reduce the seat count to 18, the four temporary spots go away, and now we've made all of the spots possible on the existing subject parcel. So, I'm proposing that we would reduce the seat count in the restaurant to 18, as opposed to the 30 that we submitted, which then removes the need to have any parking off-site with the reservation that I'm clearly emphatically asserting that we don't have to do this, and we could park on the other property, and honestly, there's nothing to stop anyone from parking between, but to comply with the mandate and the regs as they're drafted, I'm going to move to reduce the seat count to 18 seats.
So 18, 18 people have to walk to the coffee shop?
18 people.
No, there would be 18 seats proposed within the cafe, as opposed to 30.
But that reduces the parking by four?
By four spots, and that brings all of the parking required by this zone onto the blue within.
Yeah, the calculation, Mr. Gruder, is one seat, excuse me, one space per three seats. So the 12 would reduce the four that we are shy of.
So now we're going to see if everyone really wants the property redeveloped or if it really is just a "not in my backyard" opposition situation.
No, that's not what we're doing here.
Well, I wasn't directing that towards the board.
Okay, well.
I don't think it's a "not in your backyard" thing.
Yeah.
It's, it's, we don't want you parking on my backyard.
I understand.
Or front yard.
Is your presentation complete at this stage?
Yes, sir. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, anybody from the board?
Yeah, just, actually, I have two questions, but one, just clarification. The parking spaces, the residential parking spaces from the back, are they going to be posted residential parking on?
I don't know. I think that was a plan.
It is a residential.
It's not.
Okay.
You should have them numbered.
I thought, I thought the attorney just said that those were going to be...
I mean, they, they, they may be numbered on the, on the ground per unit, but I don't believe there's going to be, we have no, currently no signage proposed, Mr. Kennedy, to that end.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get my, straighten my head, how the, again, the easement works. Can you do that? Can you limit those spaces, or can somebody from the bank open and park there?
I assume they could.
So, all of the part, yeah, the parking is open, so the bank can park on the lot just as much as we can park on the area.
So you can't post them, or put numbers, or say, tell this unit owner that that's your space?
Yeah, you could put numbers, because I believe they've just done that over at the manor.
Well, so the directive would be for the residential units to be, to park...
We'll come back to you, ma'am. Okay. Did you get your answer? Yeah, I get the answer.
And I guess it doesn't necessarily, I, I think the point is that with the amount of residential units and now the seat count in the restaurant, all of the parking, regardless of where in the lot it is, is contained within the bounds of the lot and not utilizing the easement.
In an ideal world.
Any other questions for the applicant from the board at this point?
No, at this time. I have, I do have a quick question. On the parking in the back, could you, could you tell me how, how traffic flows through that?
Yeah, the idea is the traffic will either have to go around the bank in this direction, or they come in through the manor property.
Okay, okay, but once, so you're using the manor, you're, you're expecting to use the manor property for...
For a portion of the access, yes.
And that dynamic is already, it already exists, that that is a flow-through way in both directions.
All right.
There's no easement, though. I just...
No, there is. They're part of the easement, correct?
Yeah, all four have the reciprocal easement.
Oh, that is part of the easement, okay.
So are you saying that if they, if they decided that they really didn't want traffic coming through, is there any reason why they couldn't put up a fence? I mean, I'm, because that, that's a possi, in my eyes, that's a possibility which really poses problems.
That would be obstructing the easement area, though.
Perhaps. I mean, they could go back to Portsmouth Avenue and go up and park if they wanted to, but, I mean, that's a worst-case scenario, but I, when I was looking at the plan, I thought, if they can't go through the manor, they're kind of stuck when they get into that parking lot because the, the park, the parking goes from the north side to the south side of that lot. They can't go through, there's no circulation within your parking lot without having the manners opened. Does that make sense? Am I making any sense?
Through traffic, absolutely.
Excuse me.
But...
Is that what that?
Oh, you didn't hear. He said it's through traffic.
Through the manor?
Through traffic would only be around through here and in and out. That, that shouldn't be impeded at all. I mean, vehicles are going to be going 5 miles an hour.
It's the same sort of driving, the people that live there driving to get home, right? Which is what's happening in both properties.
But now to get to the manor, there's only the front entrance? Because you blocked the back one?
No.
Yes.
They can go directly through our parking lot.
I was just suggesting that there's the possibility that they could block it, if they weren't happy with people coming through.
Fire department should...
An increase in traffic.
Although, yeah, it's interesting you say that, because I was out here, out in the back of the dry cleaner a couple of days ago, and as I was driving through into the manor property, there was a vehicle coming from the manor through our property, through the locust property, to get across. I don't know if they were going to the bank, if they were going to use that exit out, because they were taking a left, I'm not sure, but that's how traffic flows now. And we did have a traffic evaluation, specific to traffic counts, but I think you all know Dr. Hazvatarian. He is the traffic engineer that did that, and he didn't cite, with regard to any of this, anything specific to traffic safety, any issues with traffic safety.
Can I just clarify this? Does, does the easement prohibit the manor from closing that off?
Blocking that connection?
Yeah, so the easement has to remain unobstructed.
Okay, so the manor cannot put up a gate?
Currently, that way is open, so that's what I'm saying.
Not currently, but it prohibits, prohibits them from doing it in the future?
Yeah, I mean, I guess anyone could block something, but it would be dealt with pretty quickly in court, I would think. That's usually the way that...
I'm just, again, we get a lot of lawyers. I want to understand what the easement says. Does the easement prohibit them from doing that?
Yes, and a pertinent easement that's for access cannot be obstructed.
But that's debatable, because if you can get to the parking, I don't think they have to allow you to come through from that area. That's just my interpretation. I think they could block it, because you can still get in there from the front. You just can't get to your property, but you can still get to their parking, which they have to allow you access to their parking, not your own, if you know what I'm saying. So, however, you still have access through the bank. So that's the question there. I think that is probably an open-ended question.
Well, and that's the sort of problem that you have when there isn't a very specific...
Right.
Route that's been identified.
Right.
And an easement agreement, but from whenever the manor was developed, it was 85, I might not remember the exact date, but it's been used in the way that it's been used for a very long time. So I, I highly doubt it would be obstructed. I think that it...
We have, from an amicable perspective, they, all these properties really should be working together in everybody's best interest.
So I, and I...
Why would they, it hurts everybody to start blocking and...
We have all spoken about trying to get some sort of agreement together, but that's kind of outside of the bounds of this inquiry at the moment.
Sure.
And, and also impossible to compel, so...
All right, any other board questions to the applicant right now? All right, CNN, I'm going to open it back up to the public, if anybody from the public would like to comment, now that the developer has presented.
So a couple, a couple things I just wanted to point out, and I'm actually happy to hear. I'm not, I'm not sure if that was a formal amendment to the application. If it was, that's great.
It's in our plan. Are you talking what he...
The amendment, you just said the verbal amendment.
The seat count.
Formal, it would, if we acted on it, it would be a condition, so it would have to be up to the plan. Right.
So I politely and quietly, you know, took a little bit of the gratuitous slaps here and there, so permit me respond to a few of them. The reason we didn't cite all the law about easements, it's long been the law of New Hampshire that an easement is, is subject to a right of reasonable use. And if you use your easement unreasonably, and there's a slew of cases, I can almost cite them for you, then that's unreasonable, and it's an overburdening of easement, and I can't imagine my colleagues in the law would object to that. So, we don't have to talk about that right now. There was a, a bit of a challenge of whether this is a NIMBY situation, we just don't want it here? Okay, well, again, I took that, and I'll take that. I've asked repeatedly, for several weeks, for some proposal, and I actually said in my letter to this board, copied to counsel, that we would have preferred to come here in full agreement with the plan, right? So, in fairness. A couple of things I'm not really understanding. I don't know what this is. I think this is a property line, if I'm correct, and I don't understand why there's a bump out over. I'm not sure what those teardrops are. I'm not sure if that's supposed to be landscaping, but pretty sure there's no easement on that, and pretty sure that I see an encroaching over the property line, if that, if I'm reading that right. I'm not sure if that's...
Mr. Smith, do you want to address that?
Yeah, that, that is proposed, small landscaped areas. That is exactly in the location of an existing painted pedestrian walkway at this time, adjacent to the, to the dry cleaner.
But it's, it's on our client's property.
But it's on their plan.
That's, that's true.
Okay. I'm just, just saying, so just a little, little presumptuous to, to come in and say we're being overly defensive about property rights when you're proposing plans for anything on the bank's property, just, just in fairness, right? I took the slight, the slap, so I just need to respond to touch. I don't see, if I read the plan correctly, I don't see any, I see this impervious, your impervious snow restriction place, because you have presumably up-shore land issues, and you can't put treated snow in there. So, if that's the case, there's four, four spaces here that aren't available for housing snow, and I, is that, am I, I don't know, I don't know if I'm missing any place for snow, snow, but I, I, as I said in my preliminary comments, the more snow you have, the less parking, right? And if you look at how you're going to plow this, you're not going to plow in the manor lot. They're not going to like that one bit. You're not going to plow in the bank prob lot. So, if you, if you have a place where you already have four spaces, you can't put snow, then you're out those four, and then you've got to put it somewhere else, so you're out a few more potentially. Just put that out there.
Say, say that again. You're out four spots? Why are you out four spots?
Because I read the plan.
Where you can't put snow?
They can't store snow on the, on the back four.
Yeah? So what is that? Why are you out those four spots?
Where's the snow going to go?
Well, what does that have to do with those four spots?
Well, the snow, you can't put snow there.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So the snow...
Doesn't mean you're out four spots. Just means you can't use them for snow storage.
You are, right. No, no, I, I should be more clear. You can't use them for snow storage.
Thank you.
Right. But, but, but when you do move the snow to some other spot, you're absolutely out those spots, and you'll hear from the bank that when those things happen, people park in other places.
You can't store snow on those four spots. If you're going to store snow on parking spots, you have ample parking spots to remove to put snow in, so I think your comment's fairly irrelevant.
Okay, well...
And you're going to truck it, clearly. You're going to have to.
It's not my project, so what they do...
But I don't see anything else they can do. It is a tight lot.
I don't, it is a tight lot, for sure, for sure, and that's the whole purpose. So, as we said, we don't object to the redevelopment, but we just want it to be done in accordance with your, your regulations, and, and we can talk about what the bank does or doesn't do right now, but tonight's been a study of redevelopment in this very area over 50 years, and so the bank has, has a substantial investment in this for now and for the future, right? So, we are, I am really happy to hear the developer is prepared to make some concessions on the parking. I think that's great. We absolutely welcome further conversations with the developer and council, and it is important that the project is still done in a way that's not going to create pedestrian hazards and is done in a way that satisfies the, the spirit and the, the more general provisions of your regulations. So, those are, those are my comments. If I may introduce our, our senior vice president of client experience with Bank Prob, Leanne Corning, and she'll just give, just a couple of short comments, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple comments that were made earlier that I'd like to elaborate on a little bit. So, the last time, last time we met, as well as tonight, questions did come up with regards to parking signs, you know, could the bank put them out? Yes, we could, but the reality is, we have agreements at some of our other offices where we allow or have neighboring units that we've allowed to have access and use our property at night to be out, let's say, by 8 o'clock in the morning, and a lot of time is spent by our employees having to, you know, manage that, call the police, tow company, all of that. So, yes, we put signs up, but the reality is, let's face it, a lot of people this day and age don't follow signs. It's the reality. And then, I think Josh had also talked a little bit about the back parking lot and that we currently do not use the back parking lot for, for security purposes. That is the case, but we currently are under agreement to be acquired by the end of this year, and that institution does have a different, in work policy than we currently have at Bank Prob, so there's no guarantee that, that property won't have more employees on it or that those lot, back lots, excuse me, back parking spots couldn't be used. So I just wanted to clarify those two comments that were made. Again, I think everything that everybody said tonight has been belabored a lot as to how, you know, we feel with regards to parking, and then I think for us, the biggest concern is, again, the flow of traffic. Right now, the dry cleaner, you know, usually has a couple cars that are utilizing the spaces. They just go in, drop, and... Right now, the dry cleaner, you know, usually has a couple cars that are utilizing the spaces, they just go in, drop and go. And right now, so for those of you that didn't go on to the site, we have, so right now here, a lot of times you have, this is the bank, spots here, so you're going to have more increased parking coming through here with people backing out, plus coming out of here. This right here is a one-way that does go out back and then to the drive-through. And the other concern that we do have from a safety standpoint is, there is a stop sign here currently, so as people come down through this, or as the traffic flow is indicating for more usage coming through here, again, you're adding a lot of other flows into this area that currently, that site does not see and has not seen for, for many years. So that is just a couple of points I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask her a quick question?
Of course.
Where, where do most people enter into your bank? Do they come in on the margarita side and go in, or do they tend to go in between the bank and the blue ribbon cleaners?
For the most part, they come here.
They do go in there?
Yeah.
So that's what gets the most traffic?
Correct.
Which is going to, okay. I was hoping you weren't going to say that.
I never go that way. I'm a customer, I never go that way.
I find it intimidating.
I always go closer to margaritas to go to that bank.
Yeah, I do too. I went around and around the other day.
Really?
Yep.
If I'm cutting left, coming into town, I wait till I'm almost at margaritas, and then I go in in between, and I go into the bank.
And you're a bank user.
Anyone, anyone going to their parking space in the back of the building drives in front of the bank? That's, the road's a one-way. Unless they're coming from entering like you do.
I find it easier.
Maybe they will too.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? Please come up and introduce yourself.
I just wanted to clarify the parking from McQuaid Manor.
Please introduce yourself, ma'am.
Excuse me?
Can you please introduce yourself for the.
Oh, you don't know my name?
Doesn't matter if I know it.
Dear Spinali and I have some units over at McQuaid Manor.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that McQuaid Manor, that easement is no longer there where they can cut through McQuaid Manor from the cleaners.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was spoken about from our lawyer at the last meeting on this. So, the attorney that represented us was speaking to the developers, and he noted concerns with traffic entering and exiting with the parking easement, which he noted was no longer part of the easement and described parking as tight. So, that easement, you think was there, is no longer there, that was taken off a few years ago when the place was, McQuaid Manor sold the place. And McQuaidians used to own it, that's where they get their name, but anyway, so. Yeah, it's not ideal for anyone to drive through there and be the wear and tear on the hard driveway if they cut through. And so, and also the lights, you were talking about the lights high up on the building. I hope they're not going to shine over to McQuaid Manor into the windows over there.
They will not.
They will not.
They will not, okay.
That's the dark sky compliant comment that the engineer made, they are not allowed to go beyond the property line. And I think they did a little bit, Christian, but not much, right?
A few tenths of a, of a.
But well around the building.
Very far.
Old fashions, lights break down that parking line adjacent to us.
Yeah.
They're going to be washed by those.
Hopefully that answers that part of your question, your concern, the light.
Yeah. It's the cutting through McQuaid Manor that.
Yeah, so that's contrary to what we're hearing. What you're suggesting is that the property you live at is exempt from the easements.
It's in the minutes.
See, when they split the two.
Is it?
Mm-hmm, it's in the July 10th.
Yeah, it is in the minutes.
Minutes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's in the minutes doesn't make it fact. It means it's been brought up, we've had several different attorneys.
She's repeating what the attorney is saying, is what I'm.
Again, it's the easement issue, I think, is still unresolved.
Yes, I think, fair.
But it's my understanding
Yeah.
that the easement is no longer there.
Thank you.
The parking.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak?
Can I put a period on my?
Yes.
I will not bother you with easements anymore.
Oh, thanks.
I will submit, at a risk of making light of something, this is serious, people put a lot of time and effort to. I did make a tactical error, I reassured Mr. Gilbert that he could leave, it was fine he could leave, but he's not here for me to consult with him. I hear the reduction in the number of tables and therefore the concurrent lack of, or reduction in parking. My client meant what he said, and I, I think probably that would be okay. The first thing that I see is, how is that going to be enforced? I think there's going to be a condo association there. Will that be written into the condo bylaws and declarations such that parking must be confined to that, to that lot? That's a surmountable issue. Unfortunately, I'm not here, my client's not here to consult with anymore, so those are open issues in my mind.
When you say parking confined to that lot, I don't, I didn't hear that.
So, as I heard what the applicant said orally, is they are going to reduce the number of tables from 30 to 18,
Yes.
thus bringing the minimum parking necessary under what they can provide on-site.
Correct.
And so what I hear.
They did not say at all that they were not going to still utilize their rights under the easement to park on the abutting properties.
I think.
Which is what I thought you just said, Chris.
In fairness, Mr. Brown, I, I think they have a right to park there on a temporary basis.
Right.
And it, I mean, that, that's a fact that I can't run from.
Right.
What I, what I want, and I guess what I wanted to hear, I suppose, is that they were saying, we're not going to have permanent overnight, you know, in other words, parking to such a degree that it overburdens that, that easement. I suspect if that's the case, and if what I heard was accurate, my client's not going to have a problem with that, but again, he's not here to consult with, so that's, that's all my, that's the balance of my comments.
What I heard from him too, I think, was that if it wasn't creating that issue for him, he would not have had an issue. I think his suggestion was reducing the number of units from 14 to 10 to accomplish the same thing. I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't know that the, the, I mean, I don't know what the pleasure the board is at this point. I think I'm going to bring it back to the board, unless somebody else in the public has a comment at this stage. All right, so you're going to bring it back to the board with deliberation.
I'd like to see the Underwood memo.
Yeah, I would too.
And the response. I think it's really important, at least it is to me, so.
Table.
So we don't have that?
No.
No.
So I guess in that light, we're probably going to end up continuing this hearing.
Yep.
So, in that vein, and I do think we generally try to make these applications as, few meetings as reasonably possible. I think it would be helpful if we can provide any other concerns we have to the applicant at this point, so they can utilize the time between now and the next continuation of this hearing to address those. If, unless it's something Underwood brings up that we haven't seen yet, which obviously we can't do. But if there's anything else on your minds, I know I'd appreciate if you share it with the applicant, so they can address it.
Yeah, so I, because he mentioned something that's in the Underwood memo, it's about the sidewalks, and that there's going to be a waiver from, I think he said eight feet to five.
That's what he's looking at.
I want to understand, because we're trying to expand sidewalks and include ADA accessibility.
Yeah.
So I just, I want to see for that purpose, and I am concerned about the traffic flow around the building, the project.
Great. You want to bring anything up?
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure I fully understand the overflow of light from your, your site onto the neighboring properties across the whole northern border and southern border of your site. It, it does creep, creep over, there you are. Did you say that is going to be changed, or how is, because it can't, it can't go over into the neighboring properties? That's, that's a reg.
Well, I mean, we're talking about ten.
It's a little, okay.
It's barely eight. And my point is, when there are lights surrounding that property, on the abutting properties, that are going to be much brighter, not built downcast because they're older, not dark sky compliant, that little tiny bit of light that could possibly be seen if the other property was dark, is absolutely going to be washed.
That's what you meant by washed, thank you for clarifying that.
It's just going to be overwhelmed by lights that are on 22-foot poles.
Okay.
I mean, we can talk to our consultants, see if you can go with lower poles.
I mean, if there's something that they can do.
You know, the, the point being is, this is a thin parcel. We are looking to make certain that it is a safe parcel for getting from your car to the building, et cetera. But, you know, I, I think, based on what I found for existing light poles out there, and what those are actually made of, and what those lumens are, or luminaires are, nobody's ever going to see it, because it's so, so reduced.
If, if you, I guess if you can just review it again, and if there is a way to reduce it, I, I would feel more comfortable with that. This is a nitpicky point, but in your, and I love, I love that you did this with your renditions of the site, but they're aren't accurate with your landscape plan. So you've got three trees parked.
I think the architect did that before the landscape.
Okay, if you could correct that, because it's misleading, and if you want to put three trees in front of that parking area, I would be thrilled. You only had two in your landscape plan. And also correct the positioning of the tree that is on Portsmouth Avenue frontage. You have that in two different places, in different images in the plan set. Again, if you want to put a tree in both of those locations, that wouldn't break my heart. You've only got three trees, I think, proposed on the site. You've got lower shrubs, but only two, only three sizable trees. And I'm not, and I'm not a landscape architect, I'm not familiar, just make sure that they're, I know the maple is a native, but I'm not sure about the, there are two others that I didn't recognize, but just make sure that they're native trees, we prefer that. And I guess I, to follow up the butter's comment about that easement on the parking lot, I would like to know more about that. Because I think that, that changes.
Talking about the manor?
Yeah. Yeah. This is.
Good for now, you know, I'll be back.
Good for now, I'll be back.
Anything for the applicant?
Uh, sure. I think this potentially is a very strong project. It provides the town with something that doesn't readily exist, where someone can live that maybe doesn't drive and has access to several restaurants, a grocery store. It, it could be a very strong project for the, for the town, and, and fill a real need. I've heard easement talk till my head's ready to bubble. And I want to, you know, maybe circle back on easements. And I'm not fully comfortable with that in mind. As much hard work as you've done on vehicle traffic, I'd like to see a little more work or some more thought put into pedestrian traffic, so that the bank doesn't, somebody at the bank doesn't run over somebody on their way to leave Frank's for a hamburger. But those are my thoughts.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go last, I guess.
Well, I, I'll go back to my point I made earlier. If we eliminate the coffee shop up front, you can move your, most of your parking out there, you can still have a green space. You don't have people cutting in front of the bank to get to their parking spot in the back of the building, and you open up the driveway to the neighbors next door. So if there is or isn't an easement, it's covered. And, I mean, you have to drive another 100 yards to a coffee shop, so. That's it.
This is just, I'm trying to count this parking places.
Yeah.
And, yeah, you've got seven up front, and supposedly you have.
Five, 10, 15.
Oh, you have 13 in the back, okay, all right, there, so there, okay. I, I, yeah.
That was it for now, okay?
Yeah.
You don't have to even say anything, I just, I try to keep things.
It's on the spot.
That's why I, well, that's what I do, so.
Yeah, just one, one clarification, so when you, when you plow the back of the building, where do you, where do you dump the snow?
Sorry. For smaller storms, they will just put it in front of the sidewalk, behind the building. There's a small area, but that's covered by a dumpster. So then, quite frankly, the Conservation Commission doesn't want any snow plowed in the direction of the reservoir anyway. You know, smaller storms, inch or less, that'll completely handle that. Anything else, that if it starts backing into those stalls, it's going to have to get scooped up with a bucket loader and trucked away.
So I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, how are you going to, it's not going to be on the manor or, or on the tax property?
No, will not be.
I think, I think what they say, or, I'm pretty familiar, very familiar with the site, but I didn't make the site walk, and what I got from information about the site walk was, snow would come up, and it would be currently addressed by putting it on the landscaping essentially, which is pretty common.
Out in the front.
Yeah, pretty common.
Yeah.
I think that that's usually what.
The, the back is more problematic.
The back is more challenging, absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, even, you know, it just is what it is, so. I think from my perspective, I think the, I understand what John is saying about the coffee shop piece, but if it's somebody's dream and vision, it's their dream and vision, if it works, it works. If it, could it be improved by additional parking, probably? I mean, I personally, we all have our opinions, I think the building closer to the road would be better, and the parking in the rear, all of it, would be better. But that's me, everybody has a different opinion, so. It is a challenging site, mostly because of the access, I think probably a little more time on that would be helpful a little bit. And I think that I will, I know I will seek some clarification on the easement issues. And what, even, even with Mr. Hillson's comments regarding his believed, what he believes is a position of his client, the manor representative here is certainly conflicting with that. So I think we, as a board, should do our due diligence on that issue.
Will we, will we get some documentation to read? Will we board members get something to?
I think, I think we have to seek it, and I think we should try to, we should actively try to get that prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
We kind of have to work that through the planning department, because we're not allowed to have like five of us get together and share stuff, because that's an official meeting, which we're not, we don't do, and aren't allowed legally to do.
And, and what I was going to mention, Mr. Vice Chairman, that has been in Town Hall since June.
Yeah.
I would be more than happy to email it to all of you if I had your emails, but again, that's not appropriate.
Sure.
So I'm not going to do that.
Do you just send it to Barbara?
I can send it to Barbara and Kathleen again tomorrow.
That'd be great, Christian, if you wouldn't mind.
They won't have to hunt for it in case it's been lost in, in a vacuum, and then they can forward it out to the board members.
That would be helpful.
Yep.
Can I, can I ask, does that packet include the McQuaid Manor information?
It includes all four parcels.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I think that's, that's about what I have for feedback. I don't think there's anything else, other than, are you satisfied with the landscaping?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little worried about plowing.
Yeah.
And how that's going to impact it.
That's definitely going to be a challenge for the site. But I think it's a challenge for the entire project already, don't you?
No, it is. Yeah, it is.
I mean, it's nothing new. It really isn't. I mean, that whole, the Margaritas property has to deal with snow. And this, they have more space to do it, but they have more demand for parking, too. So I've seen them truck snow out of there. I've just never focused on the dry cleaner. Do you know what I mean? So.
Well, yeah, they don't have overnight. That's the difference.
Sure. But it's still, they, they still have a lot of demand, and I think they probably have more demand than this project will. And, you know, you're right, on a Friday or Saturday night, it is full.
It's full.
You know?
It is.
And that's to their credit.
Tuesday.
I do.
So if you want to give anyone feedback on the landscape, that's all I was kind of pushing.
Yeah, I guess I do have another question. When, when you were here for your last presentation, we were talking about the landscaping that is on the north side currently of the cleaners, and I realize that there's a bank, but there are also trees. They're, they're small. But obviously, those will come out when the building is demolished.
Almost.
Has there been any talk with the folks at McLean Manor about putting something? Because there's nothing proposed along that edge now. I mean, the thing about, I mean, this is a big area of pavement, from the Rite Aid all the way to McLean Manor. And I think having, I mean, this is going to be a standout piece of property with all the landscaping you are proposing. But I think if they would agree to have some of that, that is currently landscaped, that's going to come out, if they could, if you could agree to something.
Well, we, we can certainly talk with, with the powers that be there, but I can tell you, if that planting goes in, it's almost in, without question, going to have to be on their property.
Oh, well, I recognize that, and I recognize that you can't.
Because there's no way to, to put the root balls right next to the foundation.
I realize that. And I know, I know that I can't ask you to do that. I just wondered if you had had a, any communication.
I know that Jeff has spoken with them.
About that.
At some point in time about that type of thing.
Okay. What more we can do? Also, in our MUND, in our MUND writing, I don't know how else to describe it, but they're talking about pedestrian safety. And on, on six nineteen five D, they talk about striping, and it says, on its own, is insufficient. And I'm just thinking that in areas, like where that questionable bump out is, where you said there's a stop sign, if there's a cross, is there a crosswalk there, or is there one proposed there? Because maybe that.
Easy. I knew I was going to do that. There is one there now, and we have basically just proposed it to be in the identical location. There is one that runs down the side of the existing dry cleaners. That, that little teardrop of proposed grass sits on top of a current painted sidewalk. But yes, the one that crosses over to connect to the bank's sidewalk, or connect the locust sidewalk to the bank sidewalk, is already there. We were just basically proposing to repaint it.
I just hope that, I mean, you brought up some great comments about pedestrian safety, and just making sure that we've looked at that thoroughly. And that's one area that concerns me. The back area concerns me, and I realize that that's on the Providence Bank's site, so you can't do anything there. But I, I'm really concerned about biking and pedestrian safety. I just, and I don't, I don't have an answer, because you are such a small lot, and you're restricted by your boundaries.
Exactly.
I would just hate to see somebody get hurt, especially if they are going to be temporarily parking in, in, in the Margarita parking lot, or in any of those other lots.
Yeah. I mean, I totally agree with you, and that's why the sidewalks that we are proposing are going to be curb elevated from the pavement. And we have provided a way for people to get from our back parking lot, all the way to Portsmouth Avenue, on sidewalk or through the patios, and lawn area. On property, you know, I mean, there's, there's very little we can propose on somebody else's parcel.
Can I ask, just to follow up on that, if everybody's working together, if it agrees, pedestrians, it's good to have pedestrians be able to move from one parcel to the other? I mean, you could do something on their parcel if they allowed you to. I mean, we can't require it, but you guys could work that out, if there was something that improved the pedestrian connectivity from, you know, across these parcels, you can do that.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, as, as I see it, we've, we've proposed to repaint the existing connection that is, that is on the ground now.
No, I'm talking about beyond that. I'm talking about heading towards Margaritas.
Oh, heading towards Margaritas?
Yeah.
That's something over.
I don't see a lot of people walking from here to Margaritas, but, you know.
But they might. I mean, that's, that's the restaurant.
There's somebody that lives there right now.
Of course they're going to.
Your proposal, people move there.
They're going to walk all the way over to Margaritas?
You bet.
You're going to walk.
Of course they will.
Maybe three months a year.
Oh, come on.
Oh, my gosh.
They stagger back.
Wow.
It's called Margaritas.
Nobody wants to cook anymore. They're going to go over there as often as they can.
They're on the vine. They can market groceries.
It's one of the attractions of the site.
Wow, okay. I think your idea is a great one. I like his idea.
You know, that's like, that's like on the sales pitch, right?
Yeah.
That's why.
We are happy to work on that with everyone. You know, there is, there is an elevated curb from the back of the building, through the patios, to the front, where people can get onto the sidewalk in Portsmouth Ave. So that's an access point. The striping is proposed to get repainted, but that's a very small way between the proposed building or the existing building, and where the bank is. There's then an elevated curb in front of the bank. So there is, you know, there's a short piece where there's no curb, then they're back on curb, and then they're off that property into the parking lot in Margaritas. From there, that's a wide open lot. And, you know, I don't know how you would break that up with anything elevated. So unfortunately, within that interior lot, striping is kind of the only option, until you kind of, and I'm not sure if there are raised parking stalls there for separation. But, you know, that, the part from the raised curb on Bank Brav over to the first curb in Margaritas, depending on how someone goes on that diagonal, probably, would be the only real spot that I see in this that could be a long stretch where someone's, and by long, I'm saying twenty-five feet. I mean, it's not an enormous amount. But there is a way to connect that way through at least the two, the two small properties, almost exclusively on curving. And I, what I don't know is if there's a curb from the Portsmouth Ave sidewalk straight up to the building. I'm assuming there's not, because it's just an old school commercial parking lot. But I think it's relatively safe, when you think of it in those terms. It is connected in two points via curb, until you're actually into the interior plaza parking lot. And that's the same exposure that you would have if you were walking around on Portsmouth Avenue and decided to walk up to anything in that plaza. So it's already existing as it is. But we're, we're happy to re-stripe, but we'll work with anyone. The part is to do something, but I'm just not sure that there's more to do after that, to, to get, you know, up through that plaza.
It's probably about a hundred feet from the edge of your southern parking area.
All right, so I was trying to get, kind of like wrap this thing up.
Okay, okay.
The developer in our hearing just went in on a point. So I'm looking for a motion.
It's all good stuff, though, right?
So for the next meeting, is that what you were hoping for, for the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Glasses, excuse me. So I.
We forgot the date.
That's, I already looked it up.
Got it.
September eleventh.
There you go.
Okay. I know. It's either September eleventh or the twenty-fifth.
I don't know. I don't know if I'd want to be heard on the eleventh.
I, I don't want to do anything on that day, but anyway, out of my control. Okay.
My rock is here, here, Alahakbar.
You're out.
It's going to be nine eleven.
Oh.
I know.
Got to keep your sense of humor, Mr. Smith.
So I move to table, planning board case number twenty-five dash three, to our next meeting, which is September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. In the Novak Room.
The applicants can be ready by that time.
Does that work for you?
Is the twenty-fifth better?
Yeah. Because I, I believe that, you know, I'm pretty sure we're done with engineering review, all of that stuff.
And then do we have room in the schedule? Do you have room in the schedule? Do you know?
At this point, I think there will be another application coming in for the eleventh. Well, a continuation of one that you've already seen. But also, just a reminder that the clock is ticking on this, and the sixty-five days will actually be up on the thirteenth. So on the eleventh, if you're still not able to make a decision, then you need to be thinking about an agreeable extension.
Okay, thank you for that.
So it sounds like we have time, we have room, and we have time. So, any other discussion on?
No, let's do it.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Say aye, please.
Second?
I thought somebody did say second. No? Did you not say?
Just now.
Okay. We have a second, first, and a second. Any discussion?
Key mark.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, sustained, looks like it, asked unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for participation. Appreciate it. A good, amicable meeting.
Have a good holiday weekend. Everybody be safe.
Be safe on the roads.
Thank you. Let's just take two seconds for you.
Yeah, that'll give me time to go get my sticker about computer. Chill for five.
Chill for five.
Bye.
Chilling.
I hope your team won.
This came to us.
I am.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Glad you do.
I don't want to give them all to me.
Oh, yeah. Peterborough. Oh, he gave, he gave that to Aaron.
What's that? This is from our interim planner?
Yeah, that's right. Pam, Pam.
Actually, yeah, it's actually from Melissa. Our interim town manager.
This third one, is this?
Good to see you again.
But we.
This next one coming up, we haven't talked about that before, have we?
Anyway, we're still in fashion, so.
Yeah, sorry.
And that's okay.
We are in session. We're just taking a breather for a second.
If anyone wants, the chair can gavel us out for a five-minute recess if he wants to.
Hey, why do they put, is it just, they do it just as a joke, windows has eject directly before, below format? So you hit format, you're wiping that sucker clean.
That is rough.
You couldn't put one at the top and one at the bottom?
That sounds like you've been there.
Oh, trust me. I don't write because I haven't had the experience.
All right, well, good luck.
Have a good night.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Hi. You've been waiting so patiently.
All right. You all ready to rock and roll? Move forward on our agenda?
Yep.
Okay, so next before us on our agenda is the application of Sonny, and I am going to mess up this last name.
I think it's Inacone.
Say it again, please.
Sonny Yanacone.
Yanacono?
Yanacone.
Yanacone. Did I do all right? Yanacone?
Yeah.
Sonny Yanacone. And I, just, that's me. It's my limitation. I appreciate your name. I don't want to get it wrong.
I was fine, too.
Sonny has a call for it, so.
For wetlands conditional use permit for the proposed construction of a twenty-five foot by thirty-foot addition to the rear of the existing residence located at eighteen Ashbrook Road. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District Tax Map Parcel Number ninety dash thirty, Planning Board Case Number twenty-five dash five. So is this ready, is this application complete and ready to be heard?
It is.
Okay. So I would like to open this hearing. Turn it over to the adjournments.
Sorry, do we need a vote on the opening?
I think so.
Okay.
So I move to open, it's okay.
My bad.
It's all right. I move to open Planning Board Case Number twenty-five dash five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, stained. You're on.
Again, my name is Sonny Yanacone. I purchased my home September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, but actually passed papers on the twelfth. I have a father of four boys, two boys in high school, and the other two are Belgian Malinois puppies. And when I purchased my home, it's a small home, and the footprint's really small, so I decided to want those addition on. I did put together a packet for your review, and went kind of the conservation, and there's minimal area where I, I do have two acres of land, but there's only a minimum area where I can build. In the back of my home, fifty-five feet out, before I go in front of the state for approval. However, a twenty-five by thirty location in the back of the home is the best place I could possibly bump out my kitchen, bump out my laundry room, and my bathroom on that back side of the house where the bathroom piping is. Because when you make the corner through my back of my house and bathroom to the living room, it's really narrow. You have to kind of turn to the side to walk through. So I like to bump it out, that twenty-five by thirty. I do have some questions, how it would be built. Professionally, I am a construction project superintendent in downtown Boston. I have no problems as far as the build-out goes, going through the proper channels as far as building. You guys have any questions, if you have to answer them? Hopefully, you do have a packet to record.
Yeah, I think, I think the reason you're here is because of the need for the conditional use permit.
Yes, sir. So I can see it with a bullet permit.
Yeah. So the, otherwise, if it was just a building permit, you wouldn't have to come to us. That's why you're here. Conditional use permit, because you're proximity to wetlands. That's, that's why you're here. And it, and it does look like he's been to the Conservation Commission. Everybody's seen Kristin Murphy's memo.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm sure you were, I don't know if they, probably don't give you this, but you're probably there when they reviewed the application and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the wetlands conditional use permit with the following condition: the applicant to recede any temporary disturbance areas to stabilize the soils.
Yes, sir.
And then the other thing, I don't know if they talked to you about that, but there's certain types of fertilizer you should and shouldn't use on your property.
It's in some contract, or rye or something.
Yeah, just, do we put that in the ordinance about? I think we did, but just nobody knows about it, right?
Yeah, when it comes up, it gets, it definitely is noted in our, it's in our conditions.
I could also hire, also obverse if that's necessary.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary. It's really more about what you use for fertilizer more than anything, right?
No, you don't want.
Nitrogen, right?
You can reach out to Kristin Murphy.
Yeah.
Give her a call.
You're allowed to use some to get the grass going, and then that's it.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, they try to get a head start, but we're trying to reduce the nitrogen levels in the water table, for lack of a better way of putting it, especially Great Bay. We flow in a Great Bay.
Beautiful natural or something.
Yeah, it's, every little bit helps.
Yes.
Sure.
So this is about as straightforward as you get.
Yeah.
He's looking for questions. I'm not sure how many we have. Wish you could have been first.
I have none, and I appreciate the aerial view, because it really did help.
Yeah, great application, actually. Limited, for your limited, what you're looking for, very good.
I have a question for the board, and maybe for Carol. I mean, I definitely appreciate it, as they've just stated their appreciation for the aerial view. But typically, we have an engine, an engineering, how do I write it?
Site plan?
An engineered drawing showing the site, and showing where the buffer line is. I mean, their whole, their whole place is in.
Site plan.
Yeah. I didn't see, I didn't see.
Not required.
I just wondered if.
I'm sure Doug gets that. Doug must get that.
It's not required for this.
No, but for us, it is.
No, I don't think it's required.
No, it might have been in the Conservation Commission package, but not in ours.
Permit's all he needs to get. He's only just doing an addition.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I just was. I just was, I was just curious.
No. See plenty of him.
I understand what, so basically what Gwen's saying, and I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but our, we try to, maybe I am trying to be a wise guy. So we require certain things that we don't require, but we get used to getting certain things too. Because this is such a barely triggering the need to come here application. We're used to seeing, and what you did for what you needed to do, I think is very good. But a lot of times we also essentially see a survey with what you have now and what's going to be added, and it, you know, it's got all the stuff marked out and stuff, which isn't required for your application, but that's what I think Gwen is talking about.
We're spoiled.
We are spoiled. They're not all, what was it? Somebody said they're not all Riverwoods.
Have you already started? I was looking at this, this picture, and it looked like you'd already, is that back?
Well, that's, that's, that's prior, correct. I was able to clear what I could without a permit.
Okay, but it looked like a building, it looked like a-
I haven't got anything.
Nothing, that was already there, okay. All right. Just curious.
The board members to my right have any questions for the applicant? I, I mean, a lot of times from my perspective, I really lean to the Conservation Commission on these matters. I think it's-
It passes their test.
Yeah, that's right. I feel like they're probably more restrictive than I would be and more knowledgeable when it comes to the CIP in general. And where it's really just a structure, an expansion of an existing residence.
Pretty simple.
Not a lot to talk about.
Yeah, so stop talking.
I, I, that was my con.
I was actually directed to come see you guys.
No, that's great, but yeah, the Conservation Commission is very thorough.
They are, they absolutely are.
I was hoping to meet some of my opponents tonight, but unfortunately they don't show up.
You'll have to take them cookies.
I don't know, I will be, tell Frank with you. At these meetings, you probably don't want to be. Because my experience has been nine, 90% are not in favor. It's pretty, it's 10% maybe that are like pro what's going on, don't you think?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, and that's what motivates them to come. By the omission is almost saying they not, you know, they don't oppose. Clearly don't oppose, they might even endorse, but nobody, unfortunately, how many people take the time to come here and say how excited they are about you improving your property? Because it's going to make their property even nicer, or they're glad, you know, it's just unfortunate doesn't happen. Sometimes they write a letter, but.
Make a motion.
I can make a motion if Mr. Vice Chair is willing to.
Do it.
Okay, so I'm going to move, after reviewing the criteria for the wetlands conditional use permit, I move at the request of Sonny. Yeah, what he said. I'm so, I'm as bad as you, Aaron, I can't say it. Do you want me to spell it for the record? Would that be better? I, I, A-N-N-A-C-O-N-E.
Correct.
Okay.
Yannakone?
Yannakone.
Yannakone. But no E, I keep doing the E, sorry.
There's a Y pretty much.
Okay, approve, okay, so let me start over. After reviewing the criteria for wetlands conditional use permit, I move that the request for Planning Board Case Number 25-5 for conditional use permit be approved with the following conditions as stated in the August 4th, 2025 memo from Kristin Murphy on behalf of the Exeter Conservation Commission as follows. That the applicant is to reseed any temporary disturbance areas and to stabilize soils. And was there something? Is that it?
Do we need to do this? Do we need to go through? We always do.
You want me to read? Sorry, Gwen's asked me a question. And it's not, you want a second?
I usually go through the criteria. I hate to be a stickler. Yeah, don't we?
On a cup, we're not making him do all those files and everything.
It's pretty simple.
I know it isn't.
So he doesn't?
He doesn't have to?
No.
Okay.
No, it's a good point, Gwen, for sure, but it doesn't apply. Because it's very limited. This is like barely making it to this.
I realize that. I realize.
Good point.
But they've, yeah, okay.
Does anyone want to second my motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seeing none, passed. You're out of here, kid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm good, man.
You know, you've seen the working of the planning board. We always do take applications for all plant.
So what's my next step?
See Doug, Doug's your guy. Yeah, thank you.
Home Depot.
You too.
Home Depot's the next step.
That's right. Okay, so we already tabled our minutes. Boy, this is when I'm going to have to like apologize to somebody because I didn't get back to them on an email. Got a master plan discussion. One of our members is trying to rally and be a leader, and I'm not a follower all the time.
Oh, no, I get it. You're talking about Marty.
I am.
Okay.
Marty's trying to be a leader, and Aaron and John aren't really lining up quick enough.
Well, I, I responded.
Oh, you did? I didn't see it. So you guys had your own thing going on. So we're like a rudderless ship at the moment on the master plan. Plan, MPOC, because really Dave Sharple's had been the one directing the committee, essentially, bringing up our agenda, getting meetings.
And we had, we had a new master plan when it started. We don't have that now.
That's correct.
We finished, we went through that.
Went through everything, so. To bring the board up to speed on that in general. So that's been a little bit of where we've been, a little bit in that gray area. And Marty was trying to step up and say, all right, yeah, let's get going.
Yeah, listen.
So.
But is there another master plan in the works?
Couple of years, I think it's in the CIP, a few years out. Did we do it? Yeah, because the, the current one is 2018. It's typically every 10 years.
And we went through each one of the, the issues, items.
Yeah, the to-do list.
And we did a, something on some of them, some of them didn't require us to do anything real, but we at least looked at each one and made some recommendations.
I think Dean has all that, Dean.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? Because he was the one keeping us moving, and he really did hit everything.
And I have to tell, so I remember the SLAC, he did come to SLAC board with a report on that. But that was, I want to say it was last year sometime, I don't have it with me, sorry.
Right, because we went through that.
It's with my master plan packet, because he did the same thing for the Housing Advisory Committee because we had a to-do list for our chapter, and he went through it with us too. And did a report to the SLAC board, but it was last year.
So is there?
So you're new to the committee.
Yeah, I've been to two meetings, so I've got, and I'm willing to, you know, to lead this thing to, talk with the planning commission, do what we need to do. I just need a little more information because I don't know.
Yeah.
So.
So what, yeah, so the three of us should probably discuss that.
We can do that.
And meet in, or I think you would suggest a virtual, basically a Zoom type.
However you want to do it.
Just to kind of go over where do we want to go, really? And what, where we've been, just give, bring you up to speed. So I'm all for that.
We get our direction from the board, right?
No, actually, that, that master plan was a direction from everyone who participated in putting that together. But what I-
But someone had to instigate the whole thing, right?
By law, we have to update it.
By law?
Yeah, yeah, it's an RSA. Can I send you an email tomorrow with two dates? And that way, maybe you could, it might help them to have those two memos. Is that okay?
Sure.
And that will, I can't send them to you because then you'll share what, right? It will do the whole thing, but I can, I could, so you're not trying to figure out? Bob might have it in a back room, mine's really good, but.
No, that would be great. I would like to be able to help if I can.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And if you're not here, if you want me, I can just email Bob. Is that better?
Well, I will be in tomorrow morning.
I know that, but we didn't put that, the list of those issues.
The plan was developed through the town and through feedback from the members, I mean, through all kinds of committees. And then when the plan was developed.
Public input.
I can't remember who developed the plan, but it was, it was a company that did it for us, an engineer.
If you go on the website, it will tell you right on the front page or not the second, yeah.
And then what we did as a committee is we took that plan and tried to keep it alive.
Yeah, and to, yeah, kind of keep, everything was getting attention, or it was-
Where was it at?
Resolved, or, you know.
Didn't apply.
Didn't apply, or we added something maybe, or two.
So the biggest thing that we've spent a lot of time, and I know we've reported this before, is connectivity. That's been our big thing for a while, and the stuff going on with the bike access and the walking.
Sidewalks.
ADA.
That's been our big thing. Yeah, we've been, we've been working on that for quite a while. At one point, we were working on potential shifts in zoning and discussing, you know, areas where we could do that. We got, we went over different maps with that. That's been a while. And then, and we were, but our most recent action had, and we lost Pete, so that was sort of a little bit of a transition. But we, a lot of our time has been spent with the, whatever they call it, streets, with smart streets or whatever.
Safe streets. Safe streets or complete streets.
Our helpers from Rockingham County. Scott did, you know, he did really the legwork, you know, that stuff. And, and then we could, we could, you know, critique it and make some changes and.
Rockingham Planning Commission is so invaluable, their service.
So I would suggest that we connect just to kind of go over that as a team and then, so we'll just circle back on that. But we've been a pretty inactive.
Well, but again, the work was done.
Right.
Now we need to make some work.
Is there anything coming, a particular date, anything coming up that like something has to be done by?
No, I don't think so.
So the only thing that, we're in August now, the only thing that starts to come up is we had always been the ones where our committee had always been the ones that start vetting potential changes to the zoning ordinance. What, meaning, a lot of times Dave would bring that to us because his position in the town. And we'd start to talk to our committee about that initially, just to kind of get our feedback, and then we'd bring it to the board entirely, prior to the actual hearings, when it, when we have to make decisions on that and then suggest it or not to the town at large.
He would tee it up and sell it to us.
Right.
This is why I think we need to do this, and if we agreed, we went along with it.
Right. So that's, that's probably the biggest one, because that takes some time. You know, we start getting into the fall, and that's when we really would be doing that. So right about now is when we'd start to. And a lot of that, Marty, is like what we're seeing, sometimes we see a lot of, for me personally, it's like when we keep granting waivers to certain things, like maybe we should be changing our ordinance. Because every time they come here, we grant the waiver. So why do we keep doing this, you know? Like I remember one about the tree thing, we changed that, made it more specific, you know what I mean? Sometimes like the grading part, to me, I mean, I can't remember denying the right to grade within 5 feet of your property line ever at this board, but I can remember granting a waiver for that a lot. And I, and I kind of look at it and go, all right, it just kind of makes us queue in on it as a board. So there is a benefit to having it there because it takes away from it being by right, makes them get a waiver, even though it's pretty easy to obtain the waiver. It makes that dialogue, it spurs the dialogue about that issue that we don't just forget that, hey, if they're grading right up on their property line, it's definitely going to have an impact on that above, right? So sometimes you have things in there that remain for reading. And then there's some, sometimes there are things that should be in our ordinance that aren't. But there's been a lot of change. I mean, in Dave's time here, I thought he was very active in getting the language to work within our ordinance.
He also gave us classes.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That were really invaluable.
Yeah.
He, he was trying to educate not only us, just to make sure we had the visuals, the perspective, but it was for the town to listen to too, about why trees are important for the, you know, for shade and the heat, and trying to offset some heat, and it was great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Pens, I remember the pens.
You were bringing them.
Being around forever.
So I think that's our master plan discussion, to go forward on that. Just circle that email again.
Yeah, so we'll set it tight. I'll send that back to you.
Land use regulation review, I think we kind of just talked about that a little bit. Any field modifications?
Well, not, not that, but bond reduction. We have had a request from the HOA of 78 Linden Street. They would, they would like their bond released to be able to complete three items that they're saying the developer never did. So we're in the process of reviewing that now and communicating with the person from the association who's, who has contacted us initially to talk about the process and what needs to happen. So perhaps by the next meeting, I will be able to report where we're at.
So the bond was with the developer, though?